Started here. We've got a big, big night ahead of us. Mr. Kimball, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Ankuma is not here. Mr. Castillo. Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Okay, very good. Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Reitinger, Ms. Ward, and Mr. Webb.
Here.
Great, thank you.
All right, uh, right now we have a closed meeting scheduled next. I would entertain motion to change that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we change the closed session to after public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, very good. Why don't we go then to, why don't we all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So now we will come to the next item on the agenda, which would be the adoption of the agenda as amended. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are it all in favor of approving the agenda as modified? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None? All right, now we move to recognitions and report. The first item today is the Wear Orange. So Dr. Jones.
We're invited, Sean Dakin. Mr. Dakin?
Please come up. Yes, thank you.
Hello. All right, so thank you very much. My name is Sean Dakin, and I'm the son, I'm the son, I have a son, Joseph Dakin, in sixth grade. And today I'm speaking about the National Gun Violence Prevention Safety Day, which is designated as June 2nd this year. Last night, the town council and the mayor had a proclamation, made a proclamation dedicating June 2nd as Gun Violence Prevention Safety Day. And I just wanted to ask the school board, and I know that the school, that Mason, will be encouraging high school students to wear orange. And that's what the program is about, is everybody wearing orange on June 2nd. And I'm wearing one of those shirts right now. Personally, I got involved in gun safety and gun violence prevention right after Sandy Hook. My son, I forget exactly what grade he was in, but the personal story is that I was driving him every day to TJ and dropping him off and saying goodbye and earlier in the morning. And then he would wait in front of TJ by himself, and then Sandy Hook happened. And my wife said, "You are never going to let him wait in front of TJ again without somebody being there." And so pretty much through, I think it was third, fourth, and fifth grade, I drove to school and waited in front of TJ in rain and snow and sun and sleet and everything else. And it was, so it made it a very personal impact to our lives. And I also do then a lot of volunteer work for what is called the Gun Violence Prevention Movement. So we're encouraging everybody to be safe, lock up their guns, make sure that they're locked away and stored away from children, and just be smart about where their guns are. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dakin. That's a very worthy enterprise. Thank you. Any comments or thoughts regarding this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm very supportive of this, and I've heard through Dr. Jones about the efforts being undertaken at the high school to celebrate Gun Violence Prevention Day on June 2nd. The only thing I'd ask is that I think it would be helpful to have those efforts at least considered at the middle school as well. I think the kids there are plenty mature enough to think about the issues. Certainly, we've all been exposed to, as Mr. Dakin said, the news over the years that, you know, kids as young as elementary school and before can be exposed to gun violence. And I think we have, we live in a very socially responsible community. So I think it certainly is a school decision, but it would be, I think, a useful thing for the MEH administration to consider as well as the George Mason administration. And my thanks to both Mr. Dakin for coming to present and to the administration for proceeding with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Ankuma. Other comments? Mr. Lawrence?
Just a quick one. I was very happy when Sean sent the note. I was not aware of Wear Orange Day in the least, so I agree. I think expanding this as much as we can to overall awareness, not just at the high school, is a very good idea. So my son will be wearing his UVA jersey on June 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Other comments? Well, and I'd like to thank you as well, Mr. Dakin, and appreciate your work on this. Unfortunately, in the news, there's been a good deal of reporting of late about how toddlers are involved in gun violence now in a tragic scale. I'm proud and pleased that the Falls Church City Public Schools have a strong stance against weapons on school property, and I hope that that remains the case in the future. This is, this is ultimately a vital public health issue in our country, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention. And I think throughout the school system, it's something that is very timely and relevant. So thank you again. All right, next on our agenda today is recognizing the robotics team, number 1418. You probably need no introduction at this point, but Mr. Baloo, welcome and welcome to your team.
Well, on behalf of this great group of kids and adults who, we've had, as you heard, a very successful season, and we're here primarily to thank you for your support. We traditionally like to show what our robot looks like each year, and so we have once again brought it with us. And it's, this was a robot that survived over 70 matches. And, you know, we've got, or exactly 70 matches, is that it?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, anyhow. It's been through the wars, and again, the, the machine is, you know, speaks for itself, but the drive team in particular did an excellent job of negotiating with other teams and developing strategies and being opportunistic whenever possible. And it was a lot of fun, very thrilling experience to watch this from the sidelines. And we've had a great year. We would like to be able to make sure that we continue, you know, having the support for this worthwhile program. And we just want to make sure that you understand how important your support for the season and for getting us to the world championship, how important that was for a number of these kids. And do you guys want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to say how important, yeah. Thanks, Tim. I just want to thank you guys again and say how important, and I probably speak for everybody on the team when I say this, this program has been to me. It's really given us a practical application for everything that we want to do in our future. And it's just shown us like skills that I never even knew that I could develop or exist. And this robot and this team made it to St. Louis and back, and we're very proud of that this year. We went further than any other George Mason robotics team has in the past years. So we'd just like to thank you for supporting us, and we hope that can continue.
Also, thank you for your support helping us get to Worlds, because the learning experience there is just absolutely amazing. You get to see 600 other teams just like us with different budgets, from different countries even. And it's really cool seeing what they've built and comparing what you've built. And you get to meet a lot of different mentors and students that have a different approach to things. And it's really cool, learning from them, them learning from you, just talking to all sorts of different people about something, you know, we're all interested in, robots. So thank you.
Thank you. Captain of our team for next year, by the way.
All right, well, congratulations to you all on a job well done. Could we get you guys to come up here and we'll do, we'll do a picture? I don't know if we can get the robot up here, but. Maybe that'll have to be incorporated into the, or we could come down?
I'll take it all the way to St. Louis. I should put it up on the table.
Yeah. Put it on the table. I don't. All right. All right, now it's time for public comment. This is a tough act to follow. In accordance with School Board Bylaws 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. So we will now begin to work through our many requests. When you come up, please give your name and address, and we'll first welcome, Robert Hoff.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Robert Hoff. My address is 300 Riley Street, Falls Church. As you continue to deliberate the reductions to the proposed budget, I urge you to fund people, teachers, support staff, principals, and assistant principals over and above the budget items that do not have a direct impact on our students. For example, the transponder transportation software. I agree that it would be nice to have, but to date, I have not heard that the school system would actually realize any cost savings from the implementation of the software. I also have not heard discussions around the ongoing costs for licensure of the software, and I don't believe that this would be a one-time expense. Please cut this expense from the budget. Additionally, I'd like to publicly recognize and thank especially Mr. Reitinger and Ms. Gill for very constructive communications and a genuine desire to include the community in this process. One topic that has been raised, which should be one of the easiest to validate, is that of our utility spending. Would you please let our community know why it has been reported that this information and documentation to validate the spending has been so difficult to produce? Additionally, Mr. Castillo, I'm interested to know if in fact you found it necessary to report Ms. Gill and her request for such documentation to the Virginia School Board Association. If this is true, would you please explain that action and the reasons for that action? Every school board member has a responsibility to seek information and to work to confirm that the answers are accurate. Thank you, and I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Next we have Liz Hume.
Hi, my name is Liz Hume. I live at 1003 Parker Street. I want to talk about the fact that people here tonight are not anti-school. We're very pro-school. I'm someone, we came back from Africa in 2012. We sold our house in Alexandria, and I always say, we bought our very overpriced house and paid these large taxes. And we do it because we love our schools. And we're here for our kids. It's the only reason why we're here. Many of us don't want to be here tonight. I'd much rather be curled up on the couch with my kids. But we're here because we want the schools to be a great place, not just an image of a great school. So my concern is that this budget issue is a symptom of a larger problem. The larger problem and the cause of this conflict is accountability, it's lack of transparency, it's leadership issues. And I'm confident that we'll get through the budget issue. But what I'm not confident about is that you're listening to us and that you understand that there are some real issues here. And I absolutely urge you that once we get through this budget issue, please, please start addressing some of these issues. We've talked, I think so many of the community has talked about issues they'd like to see, budget issues on audits, reviews. They're all out there. I urge you, urge you, urge you to start listening and start taking steps to deal with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hume. Next we have Bethany Henderson.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bethany Henderson. I live at 1002 Madison Lane. My family chose also, like Liz's family, to buy a home in this very expensive community because of the schools. And I've got 11 more years in the schools. My kids are in K and 2. There are things I love about our Falls Church schools. I love the PYP and IB programs. I think it's incredibly unique. It's what produces young people like this incredible robotics team. It's what produces kids who have critical life skills, not just kids who can respond to a test. I love the fact that we have passionate teachers who really care and are committed above and beyond for the kids. I love the fact that our school buildings are as welcoming to parents like myself, who actually work two jobs full-time, as they are to parents who are able to be on-site much more often. And I love the fact that we have independent, inclusive, and community-based schools. What's incredibly troubling to me about this budget cycle, and that's been so disappointing, is the way it feels like an either-or, like a pitched battle. "We won't listen to you." "We're not hearing." The lack of meaningful input and listening to teachers and what they have to say in principles. This zero-sum approach that it's either class sizes or teachers. This concept that in a good budget year, when we're having an increase in the school budget, that it's positioned as cuts in some crisis, which it's not. And take it from me, I run a nonprofit. I have to make these kinds of budgetary choices all the time. So here's what I'm pledging to do as an engaged community member and parent. One, continuing to educate myself about what's going on. Two, listening to all voices. Three, staying involved. And four, collaborating with anybody willing to work to preserve our schools, which I trust all of you care about, that we share the same goal, high-quality schools. What I ask you to do is the same, to listen to all voices, to remember that we all share the same goal. And when you're making tough budget choices, to preserve above all else what's actually essential and important to our schools. Not the nice-to-haves, we can't always have all the nice-to-haves, but the need-to-haves, the teachers, the class sizes, the PYP, and the community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Allison Kuchma. Welcome, Ms. Kuchma.
Good evening, Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue. Actually, I'm here actually with Bill Royce as well. He's going to speak after me because we have a little, something we'd like to share. And Liz put it right when the issue is bigger than this year's budget. I'd like to draw your attention to actually the fiscal year 15-year budget. And Bill and I have been talking about budget and transparency and honestly, everything I learned about the school budget, I learned from Bill. And he's been bugging me about this issue, and it, and only recently I've come to understand. And so we're here tonight to share with you what we've learned. In January of 2014, Dr. Jones presented a budget. And, and part of that budget was letting you all know that 172 new students were probably coming into our system, and we needed to really spend some more money. And if you go to the city website, they don't take stuff down and switch stuff. But if you go to the city website, I've made a flyer. There's a page that the school represented to the community that we needed an additional $1.8 million for these 172 students. And the, we didn't get the full amount, but we, so the budget was passed in May. But within days, the proposed budget didn't look anything like what you guys had deliberated over, what the community had seen. Many of the lines had changed. And $750,000 had just been moved. And there's new money in central office. And what's really disturbing is $750,000 came out of instruction. How does that make any sense? 172,000, 172 new kids are coming. Why would you move the money out? Dr. Jones, why would you move the money before the ink was even dry? That toes the community, you had no intention of, that money was never going to be for 172 kids because you knew they were never coming. They never, the information on the, on the state, on the city website, the numbers are not accurate about enrollment. I don't know, it's just so obvious to me. You've got the pre-K kids in twice, and you've got these huge enrollment numbers. Okay, so we gave you the money, but you never, 138 kids didn't come. But you didn't tell us that those kids didn't come. You just spent the money. And so each year, our baseline is padded by $1.4 million. It's our money. And it didn't go, where did it go? It did not go to instruction. And, and so when you have a proposed budget and you don't put the amended and approved next to it for the community to see, we can't see where you, what you do with our money. And it's our money, and they're our kids, and we get to decide. And I noticed that with the Grundling contract. All of a sudden, you spent $75,000 on a generator. Fine, if we need it, but I didn't hear the discussion. These are our schools, and we want to decide how our money is spent. And you can't just take it and then move it around.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. Next we have Bill Royce. Welcome, Mr. Royce.
I'm Bill Royce. I live at 201 North Oak Street in Falls Church. Well, follow on and a little more explanation with what Ms. Kuchma spoke about. And first, I'm delighted so many people are here and engaged, starting to understand the elements of the budget, here talking about it. So I think I'm one of the few people that actually own a copy of the school system budget in a spreadsheet. And I've got several years' worth of it. I pulled together over time, you know, from employee requests, et cetera. And it's quite illuminating. And the idea of looking through a PDF, you know, 100 pages of a PDF is crazy. You can't learn anything from that. That's, they're just eyes glaze over and, you know, put it away. However, you put it in a spreadsheet, you start to see what's going on. And this issue in 2015's been bugging me for a while. I finally pulled the rest of the data together. What happened, estimate 172 new kids show up. As soon as city council inked, gave the money, inked the deal on the money, gave the money, two days later, 55% of the line items in the budget had changed. It was an entirely different budget. I don't know how you could change all of those line items in two days. Doesn't make any sense. But they were, 750,000 moved out of instruction. That's teachers, teacher aides, wages, benefits, all that's put aside. Yet, we were just talking two days earlier about 172 kids coming in. How could that be that that plan changed so suddenly? So the net result is, there was about 1.44, 1.5 million dollars that was unaccounted for, that was inaccurately allocated to these new kids. Of that 172 that were estimated, about 138 did not show up. But you know what? We're still paying for that 138, just like they're sitting up at, you know, Mason and Henderson, all the other schools today. We continue to pay for those students that we were all told were coming that year. They never showed up, but that money's been stuffed around, you know, immediately moved around the budget to fund all sorts of things. I think it even went, you had an uplift in your salary out of it. I think you got an uplift out of your salary out of it. That's what was done with that money. New kid, it wasn't for new kids. Come on, two days, you moved it around? So, it's stuffed, moved around, nobody's keeping track of that. And now, you know, I hear people talk about, let's, you know, let's not buy as many printer cartridges. Come on, you got a million and a half in a slush fund in there. That's where the money is.
Thank you, Mr. Royce.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next we have Jocelyn Potts.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Potts. I live at 343 Gundry Drive. I know that this is a busy time for the school board, and I appreciate the time and energy it takes to oversee our school system. Thank you for taking the time to listen tonight. I recently read a comment on the Falls Church News Press online site that resonated with me. The comment from Mess 3411 read, "Changing the culture of how the schools conduct business is the critical shift that needs to happen in order to move forward and create an environment that allows citizens, teachers, and ultimately, students to thrive. All members of this community are invested in its success, whether we are homeowners, renters, parents, or senior citizens. Pitting groups against one another is counterproductive. Creating forums and the ability for people to engage has been a welcome shift among parents organizing in support of finding a better way. My understanding is that there has been an increased, there has been increased participation at meetings since the original 2016-17 school budget request was declined by the city council in April. I view this as a positive change. Citizens are concerned and hope to use this time to collaborate and help change the culture of how Falls Church City schools conduct business. We are in this together, driven by the simple idea of wanting what's best for the children in our community. We need to work together to create a culture in our schools that promotes open, honest communication and respect between all members of the school community. One where questions and diverse opinions are welcomed, solicited, and encouraged from all stakeholders. That change in culture needs to start here and begin with all of you. I'm asking you to take immediate action towards gaining back the respect and trust of the community. I encourage each and every one of you to both respond to and reach out to stakeholders who are concerned. Start a dialogue. Practice open communication and collaboration. I urge you all to visit each school and talk to the staff there, teachers, specialists, paraprofessionals, and administrators. They are the troops on the ground, the experts, and can speak with candor of what works or doesn't work in each of their schools. Respect and trust them. Listen to them. Take them seriously. And once you've done that, let them know you support them 100%. I urge you to help support a school culture that is open, welcoming, and respectful of everyone. There's no us against you. We're all in this together. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Next we have Melissa Dana.
Hi, I'm Melissa Dana. I live at 314 North Lee Street. And I wanted to let you all know briefly about a new organization that is forming to support our school system. It's called The Falls Church Way. And we're a group of parents, teachers, and community members who love and cherish our small school system. There are a significant number of members in the audience tonight. We live here and work here because of this school system. We are heavily invested in it. We, we love our teachers, and we love our paraprofessionals, and our principals, our custodians, our bus drivers. These are the people who take care of our children on a day-to-day basis. And we are also thankful to all of you for your volunteerism running our school system. We recognize what a difficult task it is to do your job while simultaneously raising families, holding down demanding jobs, dealing with life circumstances and tragedies. We're thankful, we are thankful to you. We are both thankful and we think you can do better. We are seeking better leadership for our school system. You've heard a lot of the words tonight, so accountability, transparency, respect. We need these things. Specifically, number one, we need you to listen. We need you to listen to us. Number two, we need you to answer our questions. It is exceedingly difficult, if not impossible, to get information from this school system. Number three, we need you to treat our employees humanely and with respect. That means no more threatening letters to teachers. That means no failure to ask for their input or their advice or their provision. These are the people who affect them. We need you to treat parents and community members humanly and with respect. No hostile, condescending phone calls, no threats to be banned from the school system for asking questions. The last thing is we need you to cultivate our trust. So if you want us to believe that you can't find $912,000, you need to help us trust you on that and show us where the money is.
Thank you, Dr. Dana. Next, we have Julie Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Julie Harrison and I live on Ellison Street. Earlier today, I happened to run into the PTA president-elect. I asked her opinion of everything that is going on with the schools right now, to which she replied, "Julie, we have to trust our elected officials." I didn't have a response for her in that moment, but I do now. It is hard for me to trust when over a million dollars of taxpayer money, our money, has been wasted on interest payments for the Mount Daniel bond, when ground has not even broken on the project and the plans have not been approved. It is hard for me to trust when I attend multiple so-called visioning meetings about the proposed new high school, but then nothing happens. It is hard for me to trust when I read on the school website the propaganda that teachers asked for a one-to-one ratio for computers with students, when the results of the George Mason Teacher Survey three years ago said that 98% of teachers thought the current computers were adequate for their needs. It is hard for me to trust the idea of our schools being leaders and innovators when they proudly display blatant commercialism such as the moniker of Apple Distinguished Schools. What does this even mean? This is not an earned type of award. It is hard for me to trust that the school employees are happy when 18 staff members of TJ, including the principal and vice principal, are leaving. It is hard for me to trust the budgeting process when accurate accounting records have not been maintained for the past two years and the idea of transparency is ignored. Frankly, my trust has eroded and so has my patience. I demand transparency, trust, respect, and democracy, and I would like immediate attention to the issues that I just listed.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dr. Mark Cottrell.
I live at 1020 Fowler Street. So, on the second, rather, the 5th of February of this year, at a MEH dance, a female student was assaulted by a male student. He asked her to dance and she said no.
Sir, please stay closer to the microphone.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So, a female student was asked by a male student to dance. She declined. He called her a skinny bitch and choked her. This was broken up by the victim's friend jumping on the attacker. There was no message, no mails, no nothing home from the school about the incident. And I'm really kind of concerned, or rather curious, is why was something, a behavior or an incident that would demand a 911 call in a Froyo place, Giant, Staples, wherever, why that call was not made to the school dance? My assumption is there's a policy in place for instructing staff and chaperones, volunteers, what we do in certain situations. So my question to you is, where can I find that policy? Is it publicly available? Do I have to FOIA it? Because female students being called a gender-based insult and being attacked at a school function and no law enforcement response is absolutely inappropriate, for lack of a better word. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Blanchard.
Good evening, school board. I've anxiously anticipated this evening. I hope you are just as excited as I am. Thank you again for all of the input that you solicited from four large stakeholder groups in the last two weeks. We did some scrambling, did a lot of meetings, some two and three hours, to try to make sure that we gave you some good input as you deliberate this evening. I hope it was well received, as well as solidifies some of the things that we believe as stakeholder groups, as well as kind of supporting some of the things that you believe as the school board and have discussed at length. Thank you again, and I look forward to this evening.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right. Mr. Kimball, are there any other aspects of public comment to report?
Two pieces, two pieces of written correspondence. The first from Mr. Robert La Genesse concerning the high school football program and the other from Mr. Kiran Sharp concerning the IB program.
All right, thank you. Now, on our revised agenda, we are going to have a closed meeting. Dr. Jones, anticipate this could go 20 minutes, 20 to 30 minutes, depending. So, we will get through this as quickly as we can and then we will return and get into our work session. So, would somebody move us into closed, please?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff resignation, staff reassignments, staff retirements, EPD assignments, and advisory committee appointments. And student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident tuition student and real property under Section 2.2-3711A3, in particular, acquisition of real property, specifically 604 South Oak Street, for a public purpose where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Riediger.
Ms. Ward and Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving into closed now and we will be back as quickly as possible. Thank you. All right, we're back. Would somebody please move us back into open and certify the closed meeting?
Move that we reconvene to open session?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Somebody move to certify the closed meeting, please?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kimball. We are.
All right, I'll do that.
Thank you, Ms. Riediger.
Yeah, mine's up. Whereas the Falls Church City Public School has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-377, 3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore, be it resolved by the Falls Church City School Board, hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riediger. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Would you call the roll, Ms. Kimball?
Yes. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Riediger.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would seeking unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
I would ask that we pull the Mount Daniel principal vote out for a separate vote.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I would then seek unanimous consent to approve the amended consent agenda. So without objection, so ordered. Now, on this personnel matter for TJ, we have a separate matter to consider. And I'm, I'm sorry, Mount Daniel. I'm very pleased that we can make an announcement today. Dr. Jones, if you would do the great reveal here.
We are very excited tonight that the board, the recommendation to the school board tonight is for Erin Kelly to be the next Mount Daniel principal.
For the record, Ms. Kelly's the only one out there not applauding. Well, you're going to have to do it at some point. You'll have to get up here and come and stand with us, but before we do that, I would just like to say a few words on your behalf, how pleased we are that you will be filling some very large shoes, but you are capable and well-respected and we have great confidence that you will go from strength to strength and stand on the shoulders of a giant at Mount Daniel. The entire board is very pleased, although we haven't voted on anything yet. So, with that introduction, could I get a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman, move that.
That we?
That we vote for Ms., or approve Ms. Kelly's appointment as?
Thank you very much, Mr. Ankuma. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll?
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Riediger.
Yes.
Ms. Ward and Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations. Ms. Kelly, we would invite you up here for a photograph. You can also sing your school fight song if you would like.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Everybody squish it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to say anything, now's your chance.
I really appreciate it and I appreciate you backing me publicly, so that means a lot. I'm sure that the teachers hopefully will be very excited. I just, I hope that Kathy's shoes are very large to fill, but I've been learning a lot from her, so that I hope that I can do it justice, so, thank you.
Thank you again and congratulations. All right, we have some additional materials for board review. We have, at this point then, come to the end of our meeting and now we will transition to our work session. So, why don't we all move down to the table here and commence to that? All right, welcome now to budget work session number 11. I was reading in the news clips that most of our neighboring and sister jurisdictions are passing their budgets, so the time is drawing near for us to do that as well. We've had a lot of input and work. Dr. Jones, would you like to walk us through what's come in of late?
Sure. Well, we spent the last two weeks gathering information from the teachers' organization, from our SAO group. And our SAO, those are school-affiliated organizations, so that's your PTA, band boosters, athletic boosters. All of those different leaders came together to kind of put one proposal and suggestions. We also have our support group, employee group, and also our administrative group, our leadership team. So, what you see in the packet tonight, and it is on board docs as well, is where there was the consensus or the agreement, and that dark blue column is still what the school board did at our last meeting, finding agreement. So, in the green sections, those are what we would consider pretty well done unless there is an area where the school board would say, okay, one or two of the groups didn't choose that area, is that something up for discussion? When you look at page two, for instance, down towards the bottom of the green, it says increase computer fee to $45. That SEEK and EAK both chose that, but what you'll find when you get farther in the document is that FCEA and SAO just had a different proposal. So it wasn't that they weren't considering that. But pretty much in everything that the school, the work the school board had done, there was a lot of consensus for what the school board had agreed upon. When you get into the yellow section, you're looking at the areas where three or, you can see where there are three or more, or two out of the four groups were in agreement. These were areas the school board needed or wanted, I think, some input on, because we did not have consensus as a board on these items. And again, on page three, the yellow continues, and these were some of those options that were in play. And in that yellow, you'll actually see increase computer fee to $100. And in that yellow, you'll actually see increased computer fee to $100. The teachers set $100, increased computer fee $50. That was from our SAO groups, and the original proposal had been 45 from the school board. So just three different options to consider tonight, if that's something that you want to look at. Then when you get into the orange is where it gets a little bit trickier. These are some of the ideas that came forward, and Hunter and I will kind of walk you through just a couple of those. There are a few that very well could be good ideas, but they cannot be under consideration for FY '17 for different reasons. When you look at the reducing IB exam fees for non-diploma candidates, just to give you a little context of that conversation, what they're talking about is, at George Mason, when a student is enrolled in an international baccalaureate class, they must take the assessment. And we will have sometimes students who, not very many, but don't really care of what score they get, and they could go into that exam, put their head down, and actually sleep through it, or just write music lyrics on their booklet and say, I just don't really want to, I didn't want to study, but I was forced to take the test. So what the parents were saying, even though that's a small group, is there a way to look at some sort of opt-out that's better? Are there some, is there a different approach? But what you can't do is just make all of the students pay for their IB tests. You can't say, it's part of our program, we require the assessments as part of our international baccalaureate and AP program, and we're going to make you pay. And that's an attorney general opinion for the Attorney General of Virginia. So we would have to change our whole program structure and approach, and need a lot of discussion with our IB teachers and with our AP teachers, because the school board to do this would be saying, we're going to tell you, as a teacher, that you can't require that exam as part of your coursework. And that would need a lot, that's a, that's a big, big issue. So it's something we definitely could explore for FY '18. Same way with the mid-year assessments. You know, those are given because the teachers do value them, but again, that would be a discussion with high school staff, and it would need a lot of discussion. Reducing the iPads at Jesse Thackeray and Mount Daniel, we haven't really been buying equipment like iPads there, so there's not a cost savings for that. That is, again, part of a tech discussion going forward if we don't want to have technology in those two buildings. Looking at the mowing and the tree trimming, giving this back to the general government, and this was one of those items that traditionally, it always fell in the general government budget, and they helped take care of the trees on the school property, especially the trees, and like they do around the city. And this year, they said they weren't paying for that any longer. We didn't actually have any notice about that, so we've had to adjust. But again, their budget is set, the city budget is set, and I don't think we would get a lot of traction just saying you have to take this back. That would be a city council-school board discussion. Reducing the two elementary, we've talked about that, the NYPD coordinator, part-time gifted, you'll just see none of these, most of these things are all things that we've talked about, and they didn't get traction from those four groups. Seeing if there's anything on here that, the utilities reduction, you know, they did discuss that one. Is it no cushion? Is it the 3%? And 3% is kind of where they landed on that. The dues and memberships reduction, that didn't have more traction than what we've already done. Reducing central office rent at 25%, and then just reducing the rent in general. Now, there was one group, and Hunter, I'm trying to find it on here, that was reducing rent. I think it was our SA, it was our support group, and I don't know where that went. Second page? Oh, okay, so that was where we had a little bit of traction, trying to reduce CEO rent by $25,000. Now, this in itself is a big discussion. We talked a little bit about it at our last meeting, you know, how we do that. We've talked about moving central office altogether, you know, to another location. I did go through all of the available properties in the city, which I brought it, but I decided it was too much to copy because it's just, the city actually does a good job of keeping up with all the properties, what their square feet, available, available property is, how much you're paying. You get some information, like is it full service or not full service? For us, that's a big deal, because we don't have the custodial staff to all of a sudden start cleaning eight or 10,000 square feet, or all of those components that right now we don't, you know, we haven't added custodial staff even with our new school facilities. So that's important for us to know. Is the building ADA accessible as far as if it's a second or a third level building, and it was built a long time ago? We need to be in an ADA accessible building. So this is, again, it's a big issue. Could we reduce, like down where the special education section is? I just need to find somewhere to put people. There has been concern about not having a conference room at all. We do use it a lot during the day, because if we're having teacher meetings and things of that nature, construction meetings, there is nowhere else really to go unless you're going to shut down someone's library, or, you know, do something like that for a larger meeting. So lots of discussion here, you know. I'm not going to say I've spent hours and hours and hours, I've spent as much time as I've had to research property while doing the other things, but to me, this would be something that FY '18, we would have to be looking at, if you want me to spend a year, simply because there are so many moving parts, just to move us physically. As I've, you know, met with Sevi, and I've met with, you know, Rick, trying to move all of our IT equipment, trying to move our phone system, which is voice-over IP, we need to move our security systems, there's just a lot involved, as well as breaking office furniture apart. We need someone to come in, break all the furniture down, put that back together, pay for the move, and we don't, we just don't have the staff to do it. I would have to contract that, and I can't tell you tonight that I have a great number or handle on all of those pieces over the last, we can have two weeks. I don't think we could count on cost savings in FY '17, unless we're going to reduce just some square footage, but...
So there's a cost just to move central office, yes. Is there any idea how much that would cost?
That's where I really don't have, I honestly don't have a really good handle on it. The only thing we can say is how much it costs us when we're moving our school sites, and it's expensive to bring in a team and a truck to get us moved, even if it's just across town. The big thing in our central office is you're moving photocopiers, you're moving computers, your equipment that needs to be wrapped before you can move it, and the furniture itself do not just fit through the doors. It's, you know, you've got a lot of, what am I trying to say? Connected furniture.
Modular.
Thanks. And they have to, they have to take all that apart and then put it back together. So in Sevi, quite frankly, we thought the budget was going to be done several weeks ago, and Sevi, at the end of this last week, and then as well as today, has been in Cancun because he thought this was a slow time, and so he's one that helps me with some of these numbers as well on the move, but we're just, we're just not there yet. And I don't think, definitely in FY '17, you'd see cost savings, but, and then it's finding a place to go. I mean, I even talked to one of the buildings that had, the front of the building was officey, and then the back end was a warehouse, and looking if we could do something really different with a warehouse kind of space, but it didn't have air. And so it's not that you couldn't, but we would have to invest even in the rental space in order to convert it to office, so...
So, and the other thing, aren't we, are we contracted for this particular, with this...
We are under a contract for our current lease, and I might ask Mr. Horn, he will say this more articulate than I would, to actually, in terms of the lease, we did, Mr. Kimball and I went and met with the owner of our current site and expressed to him what the board was contemplating, and we felt he needed to know, and Mr. Horn has looked at our contract. So do you mind coming to the mic and just addressing the contract side from your point of view?
Question before Mr. Horn goes into his explanation. I'm just, I'm curious just again what work process we're going to go through tonight, because Dr. Jones has talked about a lot of things, and I don't know if we're going to do a drill down on the central office rent now, and then we're going to go back and hit the other things, but I'm worried that we're going to get into a chaotic discussion that doesn't let us address issues. And, you know, there are certainly some things that Dr. Jones said that I disagree with, including that we have consensus on all of the green items, because there are three items in the green that I don't agree with, and one of which I've been clear I won't vote for a budget that includes. So I just, I want to go through in a, and I'm happy, I don't want to be disruptive in any way, but I want to follow the right process to do this item by item, however the school board and the chairman care to.
Well, I think on the, the issue of the central office is something we need to get through. We've had this walkthrough through the inputs from the various stakeholder groups. I, I am open to suggestions from, from my colleagues here. I think we need to get to, to green somehow, and I don't know how else we can do that than to, to do a slog and, you know, start through and try to populate this and try to get consensus as we go.
Can I clarify consensus?
Dr. Jones.
Majority, and so that's, we put in green, what was the majority of the seven members? We had six or seven that were here at last meeting.
But, but we, I, at the end of the day, we would have to get something on which we as a body collectively can agree on, and so it's possible that you could have a different four of seven on various issues and, and get three votes in favor and four against. So I think we probably will have to do this, we will have to go through this once, and then we'll probably have to go back and go through it again and try to, to find our way to get to yes. And I'm, again, I'm open to suggestions. I don't, I don't see an easy way to do this, but what the least hard way is, I'm happy to entertain.
So, I mean, just consensus doesn't mean majority. Consensus means everybody agrees, so that's why I object to the use of the word consensus. Second, I'm happy to do it however the chairman likes. I agree with you very much, we're going to have to do a slog through item by item. What I just don't want is a, it, a couple of times we've been here, we've gotten into discussions where different board members will raise points, and we will, you know, go around and not put an item to bed and then move on and do the next one. So if we're attacking now the issue of central office rent, I'm perfectly happy to do that. I just don't want to have a discussion about it and then, you know, unless necessary, come back to it later. I'm hoping to centralize the discussion, and no, I should raise any objections or questions I've got, if we're talking about central office rent right now and say things like paraprofessional days, or the elementary school teachers at Mount Daniel for the time when we discuss those, rather than just throwing them in at the next available opportunity.
Right, and I think one of the overarching considerations has to be, first of all, I, I think some of you may disagree with me on this, but I think prudence requires that we do not anticipate receiving any supplemental funds from our colleagues. I think this has to be a self-sustaining budget without supplements. I think the second issue that we need to consider is what savings are essentially deferring expenditures, so they'll offer no real cost savings because they'll, they'll simply be rearing their head again next year. I think the next issue that we have to bear in mind as we go through this list is what issues are touching program considerations, and that therefore really raise questions with respect to our work plan and how we align programmatic decisions and budgetary decisions. And I think the, the final question is what, what are potentially, I don't want to call them false economies, but what are cuts that could be costly in, in other ways down the road? And, and as we go through this, again, I think with, for example, with respect to the issue of central office rent, we should, at the end of our discussion with Mr. Horn, who will talk with us to the extent appropriate, given that we're in a work session about legal considerations, you know, is this something that will produce anything that we can, measurable, that we can count on for this budget cycle, or is this something that's going to have to wait for another, for another budget cycle? If there are other issues or other analytics that we should discuss as we go into this, I'm absolutely open to this. I don't view this as being an easy process. If it were, if it were an easy process, we wouldn't be here in budget work session number 11. So if, speak now, or if something comes up later, raise your, raise your voice then. But I think the, the problem we will find, and this, this sheet reflects it, is the hardest part is going to be the last $50,000, and how we get there is going to be difficult and painful. So any other thoughts or considerations as we begin this? Mr. Rankuma.
I guess so, it would be helpful to know what our end game is tonight. Is this to whittle it down to 50? Is it to find the 50? Is it, what should we hope to achieve by the time we leave here today?
Yeah, we really need the school board to have, have the budget tonight as far as what do you want Hunter and I to put together? Because, as you know, we, we did post a special meeting, one for Friday morning, one for Friday afternoon, so that we can access one of those, because the board members that responded, it looked like favorably, we would be able to put this budget together to get it passed on Friday. But it's having, you know, impacts on staff because we don't have a budget, we don't have salary scales set for all of our different groups, and we hope tonight to be able to leave here knowing exactly what the school board budget is, and so we can go and then put that together for you.
With respect to discussions about a meeting on Friday, what's driving that, excuse me, is Ms. Gill is out. I'm going to be out of the country next week, and given the fact that we have other items in our agenda, you know, pushing this into June, is, is, as Dr. Jones said, going to start to cascade. So I think it's not going to get any easier. I think we've, we've solicited about as much input as we can, and I think now is the time for us to begin making those decisions, and maybe we won't get unanimity, but we'll get the good, which, you know, the perfect is the enemy of the good. There is no perfect here, but we'll find the least bad outcome upon which we can agree, and that will carry us through the next budget year. So with that, I've given Mr. Horn plenty of time to collect his thoughts.
I appreciate that, Ver.
So...
Some general thoughts about the current state of the contract that will affect your, the calculations you perform about what level of savings, if any, would accrue from attempting to relocate or even downsize. The first is that all contracts of this nature regarding leases require an appropriations clause to be in them. That prohibits previous boards from essentially incurring debt on your behalf going forward. So our contract does include that. The contract, though, also has 121, or 120-day notice period prior to terminating the contract for non-app, non-appropriation of funds to that extent. So even at this point, you're approaching a third of the year, the third of next fiscal year, sort of being tied up by contract. During that 120 days, generally, you could expect a challenge based on whether or not you were, whether or not the appropriation was sufficient to continue the, the terms of the lease, and then although not specifically stated, a common challenge is the nature of exclusivity, and if the central office were to leave and go to another venue, it would buttress a challenge that, that money had, had indeed been appropriated for this purpose. So not to say that the contract is not sound or solid, it, it is and was at the time that it was entered into in 2008, but during that 120-day period, you should just be aware that there will be a challenge to it in all likelihood. Landlords aren't typically excited about losing a tenant, so we would have some cost in exercising our right, as by the contract language, to terminate. And again, it would not occur before 120 days.
Tom, the appropriations language is where you, just so I'm clear, where you, where it is subject to whatever the board receives funding for, is that?
Yeah, and our lease language actually includes appropriations from both bodies, the general government and then the school board. So it requires that the general government appropriate sufficient funds for the school board to then appropriate sufficient funds to cover the terms of the rent.
And is this annually?
Annually, yes.
So that we have a minimum of 120 days to give notice, but if we wanted to do this, under regular circumstances, we would do this, would, over, on an annual basis, we would give them a year's notice, is that, am I...
I think if I was projecting forward to a point where the board was committed to not appropriating funds for leases in the future, it would be something that you would commit to in the beginning stages of your budget preparation and provide notice that would allow for the 120 days to terminate during fiscal year, or ideally at the exact end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence.
So, do we have an ability to pare down, even if we don't completely leave? Could we vacate certain space and save money that way without the legal problems?
That wouldn't be specified in the terms of the lease, it would have to be something that was negotiated.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Reitinger.
So, thank you, Mr. Horn. A couple of things. I also read the lease provision, and I did have the same question as Mr. Lawrence, which is, it was only two years ago that we expanded into additional space, but I wasn't at all sure you could terminate under a non-appropriation part, just the amendment, but I suspect the answer's no. It's either the lease or not the lease. That said, it, are you raising a question whether or not if the school board passed a budget that specifically, as a line item, did not fully fund the rent required to operate for the year in the current premises at 800 West Broad, that there would be some doubt about the legality of a 120-day notice under the contract to terminate the lease?
Not questioning the terms of the lease or the appropriation clause effectiveness, just simply speculating on the probability of a challenge based on a partial appropriation.
You know, the, I, you know, I've heard what Dr. Jones said about the central office premises, and I've got no doubt, I've looked as well, and I didn't find any office space that is large enough, you know, right now, at least as large in the city as the current central office is. I just, I wonder if, you know, if it doesn't make sense for us to get to a less expensive place more quickly, and I think there are possibilities of subdividing that I'd like to hear something about. For example, I raised the question in an email I didn't, don't think I heard back on, and whether the, you know, the special education offices could be in Jesse Thackeray, which I think has some extra space available in it, and whether we could move to a smaller footprint for the central office? Because it is, it's not excessive in terms of almost 11,000 square feet for 35 people, roughly, but one could imagine a tighter footprint. And it is among the most expensive office space in the city. So in a tight budget time, it feels like a luxury. And I get that we may not be able this year to have a lot of savings, but the sooner we move, the better. And if we fully appropriate the funds for the central office in the current location, then we've kicked the can down the road another full year, because we can't do anything until we fail to appropriate the funds a year from now for the central office. So if we're going to bite the bullet, I'd rather bite the bullet sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, for Jesse Thackeray, and I apologize, I thought I put that in a note. I thought it was my, maybe my Friday note, but if I did, I apologize for that. Jesse Thackeray has a room that's open, but it has many of the same issues that we are working through, and we did it at TJ and also at Mount Daniel, with parking. And the site plan was incredibly difficult to get past at Jesse Thackeray because the parking spaces are purty adults that are assigned to that building. So what we couldn't do is take that classroom and put, you know, eight people in it and have, and there wouldn't be anywhere to park there. And the street parking in and around there was also an issue from that community. So I would just call that out. We could probably put one or two people there, definitely two people, because there would be a teacher and a pair someday. But it, I also want to be careful we're not fragmenting a department, so, you know, and could we consolidate? Certainly, we could go back to consolidation and try to figure out where to put people. It is about, I think, 13 people that we would need to vacate out of that, the office at the end. And I'm not sure that, without losing our conference room, we could compact that many people into our space, but we can make anything work, you know? We can have two people in a smaller office and my concern right now about counting on savings in a budget that we're trying to pass in the next, you know, couple of days, savings that we really don't know will be there. And even if we say, well, we're only going to pay X amount of dollars, I guess that's what we're saying, we're going to cancel that part of the lease, and then we have a challenge, and so we think we've saved X amount in the lease, and we turn around and we're utilizing that for legal fees and to, in order to fight the cause. And I don't know what the unknown is, and then Mr. Kimball and I would be looking at being in a hole, not having the money, saving any money, I guess if we just walked out a part of our lease, but then turning around and having to find that somewhere in the budget for legal fees. And our conversation with the owner of the building is that there would be a challenge. He was very clear to both of us that there would be a challenge and felt comfortable in sharing that with the school board.
Was that a challenge for complete vacation, or did you talk about partial? Because, and also, on the issue of Thackeray, if the issue is really parking, I mean, when we were talking about Thackeray and parking with the neighbors, we were also considering talking to the nearby church about using some of their lot.
And, yeah, the church has actually been great on special events, and as long as they're not having a funeral or, but it's not something that we could depend on over time, every day, for staff that work at the building. But they have been great for us, and if we're having a special event, we can plan a special event where it's not on the same night as their church event, and we've been able to do that, but a permanent staff parking there would not be.
Well, at night is one thing, but during the day, I can't imagine there's much.
Yeah, I mean, I, we could certainly go back through that again. I mean, you know, we looked at that when we were just building the building, so. And, you know, buildings are very hesitant to work with us in that way, because it's a big commitment to give up part of your parking lot. And you do have funerals and things at churches that happen during the day.
So, let me be, let me understand this. Are we, this reduction in central office rent, is this an attempt to save how much? $25,000?
Well, but, but that number's based on what? I guess to me, the only realistic thing would be going back two years and, you know, getting rid of what we added on. Other than that, I don't know what that's calculated based on.
Well, more importantly for me, if it's $25,000 with potential, you know, litigation, what, is it even worth the effort? And not knowing that there's a cost of a search, there's all the stuff that you may need, tenant improvements in a new place, can we, it's, we don't have the time, I don't believe we have the time to chase all of that, and it's an unknown with no, it's different if we're cutting a teacher salary, we could do that. You get into this rent issue, you're dealing with a potential lawsuit, you've got to find a space, you know, I'm not sure for $25,000, unless I'm looking at the wrong figure, that...
There were three different totals.
So three different, so what are we looking at? Is that a cumulative number in total?
We would like to look at that, but that's ours, I mean, that's our recommendation, but it's not our, you know, it's a school board budget. So you have three different totals.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I see one for 25 on the, on page three. Are there others?
On page four, I think, is...
And how much is that?
Second, there's one for 86.3, and there's one for 50,000.
And the reason I'm struggling with this is, it's easy to put it down here to say, let's cut it. But where do you put the central, where do you put the staff? I mean, I'm thinking, have we, I, I'd like to support a reduction, but it's like, what, do we throw you guys out on the street and go find something? It's not that easy to deal with in such a short space of time. So for me, it's something I think we should look at. Realistically, yeah, I think it's high, or which, it's something we can look at, but can we do it over a 12-month period and be very, and have the time to do it, and find a place, and really bring it down, rather than get into this and find that where we're locked into some quagmire with a lawsuit, and now it's more costly than what we were trying to cut to begin with? I think there's too many variables.
Right, so look into it seriously, but for FY18.
Yeah, and let's focus on something else. But try and cut 25, as much as I hate to do it, I'd rather cut into the contingency and deal with that issue and put that to bed. Because we just keep dragging this thing, and yet, we won't get very far if we're going, going to have a lawsuit or another one come, you know, if we're going to get kicked back. I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, it seems to me that...
I mean, there's not much we can do at this point, right? I mean, I don't even know why we're even entertaining this for this particular budget. I mean, this is something I'd like to see for the next budget, but I don't see what we can do with it right now. I mean, there really isn't. Am I wrong?
So at this point, what I'm hearing is that there is a desire to pursue this idea, and I think if we do it in a longer-term fashion, we may be able to realize greater efficiencies and more cost savings than if we do it now. Is, am I capturing the sense of the board on that accurately? In the board in general, I think Mr. Reitinger would not necessarily agree with it? Okay, all right. But I would ask Dr. Jones if you could look at what, what ways there would be in the short term to increase efficiencies at central office, and then to develop a plan that maintains quality of administration and of work of the appropriate teams going forward. Is there a way we can do in an orderly process, something that would enable us to reduce what is ultimately about a penny on the tax rate for the central office rent, such that when we're here next year, well, we'll, next year, we won't be here at this time? But we'll have a plan, and I don't know if you can coordinate also with Mr. Horn and maybe find a path forward that would reduce paying lawyers, which none of us likes to do. So, okay, so with that...
Well, actually, sorry, one thing...
Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
You said potentially saving a penny on the tax rate. We're not going to get any place rent-free.
Understood.
So, let's not have people saying we can save a penny on the tax rate by cutting rent at central office, because we still have to have something somewhere until we get a new high school and we can move there.
The, the lease is equivalent to a penny on the tax rate. I do not assume that we'll get something for nothing, or that we'll be, you know, running triple shifts at a certain office so we can maximize our utilization. All right, so with that, we now have to find our money, and what I would suggest is, if we can begin at the top here, and I guess what I would ask is if we can operate perhaps by exception as we go down this list and do a preliminary walkthrough and find out who's exercised about particular cuts, Ms. Rancuma.
So maybe, maybe that's what you're asking, but I just want to understand, is this, are we overlaying these groups' requests with ours?
Ms. Rancuma raises a good point of as we go forward, how are we going to get our...
The green. Oh, yeah. I believe that, I believe, Dr. Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we provided you information in terms of feedback and suggestions we got from the various, the SAOs and the various employee groups, for, you know, for informational purposes, because you wanted to know kind of where the folks in different positions were weighing in. Certainly, you know, the board, you know, can take this into consideration as it makes decisions, but ultimately, you know, from our staff standpoint, the decision is yours. And it's, that the information there is just that information to help you make decisions.
Right, and I'm saying that to help us make the decision, we had some ideas of our own, and then this is from the group, so this is, call it the community input, or at least the staff input.
Well, no, it's not ours in here.
Yeah, the items that, the items that are in green have not changed really in the last several meetings. What you see in the yellow, there's some in the yellow that's a little bit different, and then the orange are a little bit different.
But the point is, the blue column represents our general agreement.
It's what you went through at the last meeting, and where you went, in the green section.
I mean, there are some that don't necessarily, still don't...
Correct, and, and, well, and from, Dr. Jones, in my understanding, in putting this together, and, you know, it, well, it was our understanding, you know, at the time that, and again, at the time, that that, that in terms of the majority of the board members, where things were shaking out, you know, people change their minds, new information comes in, and, you know, so certainly, you know, we don't consider that lock in stone.
No, but I'm just saying, I know Phil wants to revisit some...
Phil wants to revisit some of the green items. I mean, I don't necessarily want to, because I know I'm going to be voted down again, and if, I don't know, are we doing this consensus or majority again? But I, I think I'm going to take my lumps on these, but I definitely have some opinions about the yellow items and orange.
Yeah, but so let's...
Well, yeah, and, and so, we have the, we have the tool here, and so my approach was going to be, let's walk through, to the extent that anybody has strong feelings, we can note that, and take a walkthrough to see how this works, and then we'll have to come back and circle back. We'll populate this so that it shows in real time where we are on the counter, and then we'll, we'll have to do another pass on this. I don't know of any other way, I mean, this is a, I wish there were some algorithm, and I'm sure somebody can come up with it at some point, but until that point, I think we need to just go through, we have the things on the spreadsheet that are now populated with an X, and let's see where we are. If somebody wants to put a finger on one of those, we'll, we can pull it out, and then we'll circle back. Mr. Lawrence.
Well, and if people could make clear whether you don't like it, but you're going to swallow it, or if Phil said he's still got one, that would make him vote against the budget, because the bottom line is, we need at least four votes for the budget. So if we have a bunch of items that four people have said are still in there, and they will vote against the budget if they're in there, then it can look like we have agreement that's not going to get us to a budget in the, in the end anyway. So I would just ask people to be really blunt, if you really would feel that if it's still in there, you would have to vote against it, just be honest, because we've got to pass a budget.
I agree, so we are all, we are all in this together. So with that, I would say let us, let us begin at the beginning. So the first item, reduce teacher salary improvement by 20%. I think there's... Let's do it this way, rather than a walkthrough, looking through this first, this page one, is there anything that any board member here sees going from top to bottom that they would like to speak about, that they feel strongly about? Mr. Reitinger.
If I could just lump my green comments together, since I'm using the electronic version instead of the paginated version, and I, you know, I will take Mr. Lawrence's schooling to be as clear as possible. I don't agree with the reducing one paraprofessional day. I think that takes money away from the most vulnerable and least well-paid people in our school system. I think our paraprofessionals already give way more than they're paid for, and I won't vote for a budget that reduces a paraprofessional day, I just won't. So if that's included, count me off. The, the only other, one is reduce summer computer fee, or increase summer computer fee to 45. I'm not opposed to that at all, I just, if we can increase that more and get more money, I'd be happy to consider that. And the reduce one elementary teacher, that's not a, you know, a Khrushchevian pound-your-shoe-on-the-table moment for me, but I, that's the, that would be, I would like very much to try and find savings elsewhere, which I actually think we can.
Which item?
The very last green item, the reduce one elementary school teacher. If we can get that 106 by other cuts that are less material, I'd like to keep that elementary school teacher. If we can't, and it absolutely can't be done, then I would agree to not have that additional elementary school teacher.
What spreadsheet are you looking at? Because it's not the last one on, the one we just got.
No, I'm looking at the one that has my markings on it, so I know what I voted.
Okay, because we all got this one, so.
It's the fourth one.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if you say it's the last in the green, for us, it's not the last.
Sorry, it's the last in the, in the actual Excel spreadsheet that the superintendent circulated for our inputs, which is what I'm marking.
Oh, yeah, and there's a, so the one tonight? There was a new one that went out today.
I understand, but I didn't translate all of my own markings into that. I can look over and do it that way.
No, 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 we've got it. No, no, we've got it. All right. Anybody else have comments about the greens?
I do.
Ms. Ward.
Okay, well, I just see four, three items on here alone that are just going to hit the high school. I'm not really happy with that. I mean, we have, we're taking away athletic fees. We're taking, we're taking $12,000 out of that budget, out of athletic supplies, but yet, at the same time, we're increasing the athletic fees. I kinda, I don't know, that just doesn't sit right with me. I think it should be one or the other, or reduce both of them somewhat. The other thing that's included here is increasing student parking fees, and I understand that's necessary to make up for the budget, but I really don't see why the high school parent should be footing this large part of these increases, and in some cases, decreases. And then we're going to have this summer computer fee, too. We're increasing that to 45, we'll probably end up at least increasing that to 50. There's four fees for just the high school loan. That doesn't sit well with me. And the other thing that I really didn't talk about before are the elementary strings, that program. I really hate to see that go. I mean, I know I might have to just, like I said, take my lumps, but I just wanted to make my point that I think that's a very important program, and I'd like to see it stay.
Sorry, Ms. Ward, what was the first one again that you raised?
The athletic fees, and the equivalent of the $12,000.
Where's, where's that farther down?
The athletic supplies.
Let's see.
The athletics fees, that is in the middle, is on page one in the middle.
Mr. Casio, you might just clarify for Harvard, but the strings is still a club, so we won't lose it, it's just, it's a club status.
Yeah, just to clarify, Ms. Ward, that the strings will stay club status, so it won't go away, but it's still club status. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else on the greens?
No, it's just, none of us like any of them. I mean, that's the problem, so.
I was going to say, while I agree with Mr. Reitinger about the paraprofessional day, I'm not, I don't think I'll go as far as voting against it, but I would highly recommend we find a way, if possible, to keep that one paraprofessional day.
Any other comments? Mr. Sharpen Kane, what are your thoughts? We're not letting you off easy here.
I mean, Ms. Ward spoke to the issues that concern students most. I'd say that I think there is a difference between the athletic fees and then student parking, because usually students will work a summer job or during the school year, and parents will usually make them responsible for paying the parking fee, whereas they will pay the athletic fees. And again, I personally think that if there's a system of subsidies and to help the people who can't afford these things, I think it's fine, and the issue you'll find is more that people will get mad over it, but I mean, I guess it'll eventually boil over. So again, like, how annoyed do you want to make people, you know? But it's a lot of money, too, so.
Okay. Mr. Webb, any, any thoughts?
Just more the, because I did, Ms. Ward, last one, it would be the, would like to see the one paraprofessional day to not be in the list, but I'm, like Ms. Rankuma, I'm not at a point to say that I'm going to vote against the budget if it's, if we can't figure out a way to, to put that back in.
All right. I don't remember who suggested this, but somebody said if you, if you want to take something out, you have to put something in. I don't think we're quite at that point yet, but, and bearing in mind that this spreadsheet was short, 62,000, let's, let's move down now into the yellow, and this is where we can start to click on things and perhaps make some additions. But I think some of these issues also touch on some of the questions that I have, that are these potentially changes that will come back to bite us later in the budget year, starting with the utilities reduction and a 3% cushion. As Dr. Jones has said, all it takes is a hot summer, or a hot warm fall, or a cold winter, and we'll be in the red zone on these. What are your, what are your thoughts about that? Mr. Lawrence.
Well, first, could we have Dr. Jones explain it? Because we had one comment a couple of weeks ago where somebody said, I can't believe you're asking these kinds of questions, and I don't think members of the public understand that sometimes we ask questions, not because we don't know the answer, although that's the purpose of a work session, but also so that the public hears what the answer is, and not just us in emails back and forth. So if you could explain the idea behind the reduction and what the 3% cushion means, I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Sure. In the proposed budget, the one that came forward to the board in, in January, the way that the utilities were, the numbers that were, that were budgeted for the utilities there, basically looked at the last three years and said, okay, on, you know, on average, or not on average, going back and looking at the worst-case scenario, you know, for each year in terms of gas, electric, and water, and went ahead and used those numbers in terms of recommending the budget for FY '17. In terms of looking over the last three years and averaging them out, obviously that brings the number down somewhat. In terms of, I think Mr. Reitinger, it was his recommendation, that basically we look at what we spent last year and go ahead and use, and use that number, and that would provide us with about $52,000 of savings, and that is the assumption that, that FY '17, the upcoming year, our experience in terms of utilities will be exactly the same as it was in FY '15, which, if we have an especially hard winter, or especially a hot summer, or some, some extreme that we did not experience in FY '15, that there would probably be extraordinary costs with that. And the idea of keeping, you know, some cushion, some leeway to address issues with utilities, honestly, and going back and looking at it, I feel like if we, if we leave 3% in there of the utilities, that that, that would, that would give us enough, you know, comfortable to address, and, you know, and if it's not enough, obviously, we would, we would have to, you know, do something else. But it wouldn't take it back to exactly what we spent in FY '15, you know, but at the same time, it would not assume that we're going to have, you know, a super, super cold long winter and a super, super hot, long, long summer either. Oh, and that, and that's true, yeah, and in terms of utilities, you know, last summer, they were shut off for, for Mount Daniels, so in terms of this year's actual experience in, in Mount Daniels utility, that, that will show up eventually with, with the FY ' '16 actuals.
Okay, so in effect, this is saying, we assume FY '15 is the number, and then we added 3%. Is that what you're saying?
Basically, that, that's what, that's what it would, yeah, that's what it is.
Why only three years? Seems like a real...
Well, and I'll tell you, you know, there are a couple of things. One, obviously, as Dr. Jones pointed out, you know, we've added space, we've added space at TJ, we've added, you know, at Thackeray as well, and the other, the other issue is frankly, the rates, because the rates do, you know, do change, the corporation commission, you know, can adjust the rates, and so really, going back, you know, any longer than that, it may skew the data, make it less accurate.
So in terms of rates, for, for an entity like us, is there any advance notice? Are things locked in, or is it pretty much they can raise them at any point they want?
Well, there is a process for, you know, for doing that, and we do belong to VEPCA, and it's, I know the V stands for Virginia, and the E stands for energy, and the P stands for public, but, but basically, we get favorable rates through them that are, that are worked out with, 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 you know, the utility companies, or the electric company in particular, you know, in light of the rates that are set by the corporation commission, but there is a process for doing that, and we, you know, we would have, you know, advance notice of that, too, but, you know, sometimes the advance notice, you know, can be maybe, you know, nine months that something's going on, and sometimes we're caught by surprise, so...
Okay, but the bottom line, it sounds like this figure isn't going to make you lose sleep at night.
Me personally, no. It doesn't. Dr. Jones, she may, she may lose an hour or so, but, but...
Well, and I would say, it's, this is one of those things where we're not really cutting anything, where, where, it's sort of like me on vacation where I try to get to the beach without filling the gas tank when it's going towards empty. I'm hoping we'll get there, but this isn't cutting anything, this is simply increasing our risk that something may go awry. That being said, I'll tell you, if you take out the items that were just discussed, we have 178 to go, 178,000 to go on our tally, if we add this.
Which items?
If we take out the items, increasing athletic fees, parking fees, elementary teacher, summer computer fee, paraprofessional day.
Were you taking them all out?
Well, right. I didn't say we took them out, but I'm saying that...
If, if, okay. Just if we remove them, where would we, where would we be?
Right.
We would still need to find $215,800.
Right, so we have, we have some, I'm just trying to give us, give us a sense that we, we are...
Right, but that was completely taking them out.
Understood.
Right.
And we'll have to go, because for, for the purpose of this exercise, we'll go through this, we'll try to close the gap, and then we'll see where we are, and then we can go back and revisit them. You know, some of this exercise, again, I, I'm sure there's an algorithm that would do this for us, we're doing it manually, but I think this will illustrate both to us and, to a lesser extent, the people trying to keep, keep up with us on TV, this is difficult, and there is no, there is no easy solution here. So I would say for the time being, let us, you know...
So you're putting that in?
I would, what's the sense of the board on that? Can we...
I would ask that we put it in. Put what in? The utilities?
Check the box for the, for the 3% cushion, so that...
Can I explain that? I'm a little confused. So you're saying if we put that in, as in, as in we make a cut, a reduction by that much?
You would select that option.
We'll select that option.
Yes.
Okay.
Thereby reduce $1,000.
Does that mean we've gone from 62,500 then to 32,500?
Well, that's...
Not exactly, but...
Well, but I think that's where it gets complicated, because Justin was taking out things other people had objected to completely, so it's a fine question.
The, the hard part is going to be here. I don't know how we're going to have some give and take here, but, you know, I guess the first thing is, what could we do unanimously, or, you know, N minus one, and then let's, we'll circle back. Ms. Rankuma.
Hunter, how much do we have on contingency with that 46,000 out? What is left?
With the 46, it would be $155,000.
All right, I'll hold that. It's for now.
All right. All right, move, next, I-Station reading funds.
So do we check the X or resist?
We are checking that X, yes.
Okay, thank you. The utilities, yes.
Utilities, yes, so we still have, I think, about 190 to go.
Yes, very good.
The next issue is I-Station reading funds. I think the threshold question here, Dr. Jones, is can you zero out I-Station, or do you have to, you have to have something in place, is my understanding, so if you could talk us through it.
And that's probably Elisa's question, because she'll have to figure something out, especially for ESOL, so she'll just have to find it, take it from somewhere else. She won't be able to fund something else. Something will be cut out.
And I'd just like to reiterate, it's not necessarily I-Station, that's my concern. It's taking the $7,600 away from being able to have programs that will impact our kids, whether it's for ESOL or for our, our students, so it's not necessarily I-Station. I'm happy to work with staff if that's a program that they don't feel like is working for the students, but it's just that the funds would be totally gone, and if we do add something in a year, then that means in the FY '17 budget, we need to come up with that, that amount of money all over again, so that's...
Could you, could you refresh us on what it does?
It's a program that looks at skills, whether it's phonemic awareness, letter recognition, there's some reading components. It's right now for K5 that we pay 7,600. In previous, before we chose I-Station, Mount Daniel was the only building, and they were using Waterford, which was similar. There are definitely some components that Waterford had that I-Station isn't doing. It's not quite as, I guess, entertaining or kid-friendly as Waterford was, but when, when the committee worked and looked at, I think it was four or five programs, I believe it was, I-Station was the best of what we had, and at that time, Waterford was not on iPad, and so that's why we went away, and the lab was going away at Mount Daniel, so that's why we went for something else. But I know Waterford is, they, they are working to get it so that it works on iPad, but it's more expensive than the 7,600.
Three times more expensive, isn't it?
It's about, it's still in beta, but it's about 14, it's about 14,000 to do that a year, and that would just be K2, so we'd still have to find something for three through five in addition.
At some undetermined cost.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Reitinger, you look as if you're going to say something.
So one topical point and one other, just one issue I wanted to flag for people. The, I know less about this than Aaron does, but I, you know, I read Aaron's email as saying that she, her understanding, and when you look at the chart, it certainly looks like most of the groups are not, most of the educator and other affiliated groups are not fond of I-Station, that there were, because it was not considered educationally helpful, that even use of a freeware program or a very low-cost program would be as good, and so that's, I mean, like I say, that strikes me as a relatively easy $7,600 to take in this year. The other thing is, I just wanted to, because we've got the SCEA, the SAOs, the CAC, and the AEAC columns, that the PAC recommendations are not here, that was a separate sheet, I believe, right?
No, this is...
It is with FCE?
They all met together, they met together.
Okay, all right, then I, just, great, that's clear. Thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Hi.
I mean, and I just, the, the day after our meeting here, I did go up and have a conversation with Ms. Halaico, Erin Kelly, and Scott Daughtry, who's the computer person, and we were talking about looking at Waterford again, so, again, that money would be gone if we didn't look at it in the fall, but the following year, we'd just have to find the money. I'm not sure that teachers and I could be wrong, because I have not spoken with teachers directly, that they would want it necessarily to go for free forever, maybe for a short period of time to trial things, but eventually, they probably would want something that is going to be a cost, a program that would cost again.
So from a data perspective, what, what do we know about I-Station, what it does, what it doesn't do?
When we chose that, we did go to another school division to look at what the benefits were for their students. And at that time, it really was making a difference. For our ESOL population, that was one of the reasons why we chose it, as well as it was a time when Mount Daniel was looking for something else. I honestly went in and looked at the reports to see, are we using it with fidelity? And it really depends on the class and the grade level, what fidelity means. So I'm not sure that we've only been using it for two years. And a lot of times, it takes a couple of years to really be able to see the results of a program. But I believe if teachers say it's not, it's not working, they're in the trenches every day. But we do need to make sure we do have something to address the needs of our students who have struggling needs.
Other questions, thoughts? I guess, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question. We heard from the digital learning team from Mount Daniel. That's K-1. You said this is K-5. So have we heard from the other four grades?
And I guess my concern here touches on, this seems to be a programmatic change where in addition to that, we, this is not $7,600, I don't believe. It will, this is something where if we went to Waterford, $7,600 wouldn't get you there. What is the license? Is I-Station billed annually?
Yes, annually.
Okay.
So it will be up as of July 1. We can choose to up it for another year or not. So we're not under contract for another year. I have not, I've received the proposal for the cost for next year and it has not gone up. But we have not done anything.
So even if we don't go forward with the I-Station, you still have to spend that money on some program?
At some point, at some point, I think teachers will want to have a program that may not be free.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I think, I mean, we, potentially, we could go next year and not get Waterford or Imagine Learning or some other program that's out there. But I think eventually, in a year or so, teachers will want to look at another program. And I know that Mount Daniel loved Waterford, would like for Waterford to come back. And right now, when I talked to Ms. Hleko, that was right around $14,000.
I don't think that's the rollout cost, so I just want to...
I think that was an annual cost.
That would be your annual. But to roll out a program like that is usually 20, 20, in between 20 and 30 for an elementary. Because, and I'm not saying one way or the other. If they don't want I-Station, to me, three out of the four groups chose it, take it out. And then in FY18 and FY19, we'll have to come back and deal with it anyway. So, I mean, it's $7,600. It's not going to pay for a new program if we go in another direction, whether that's Success Maker, Compass. I mean, we've looked at all of those programs over the last couple of years. It's going to be a hefty cost and it will probably come back to, let's not do some sort of other material. Like, we're doing writing materials this year. It'll be a bigger discussion, K-5. Because it's also unusual, they'll give us one license for elementary. That was very unusual. This really should have been $15,000.
Normally, they, most companies, if you're in two different addresses, they make you pay two different licenses per building. But I-Station said that we could have one license because they wanted to work with us. They were, you know, new to Northern Virginia.
Oh, God, so... Would the teachers be able to work without any program at all? You're saying that they might wait a year? I mean, it sounds to me like they'd be going from having the support they needed for the students to having nothing for a year.
Well, I think they've said that there are apps that work for their students right now. But I would say in a future year or next year, we would probably come together again and look at programs that would, programmatic things that... Correct. We will not be able to purchase anything in FY17 regardless of whether it's $7,600 or not. We probably, will take a year to look at something, but it will come back in future budget years.
So there's the apps that can work in the meantime? And you feel they're adequate? I mean, are they going to be...
Honestly, I have not sat down and had that conversation with teachers. That was one of the things that were discussed in public comment, that there are apps that are free right now that teachers can trial and can make work for, in the short term.
Okay, and then if we start another program, and you were saying it's going to cost to roll it out, would be another, like, for the next budget, we're going to look at an increase of like $26,000? $26,000, is that what you said? About $20,000 and $30,000 in addition to the annual fee?
And I mean, because there has not been, we've not looked and piloted or trialed another program, we don't really know exactly how much it would cost. But I just know that in quotes that they were getting on Waterford, it was right around $1,400 for an annual cost.
Yeah, the first year's always more expensive.
$14,000, I'm sorry.
You're paying to load all of your students into the system there. You're making sure the SIF complacency works. So you've got all of those different components. And then after that first year, it goes on an annual cost. And that's pretty typical for school software.
But again, I guess, well, a concern then in terms of the consistency of, you know, I would like to think that our students can expect to get a similar experience in whichever classroom they're in. And, you know, I could see that there might be, teacher A wants this and it costs a little bit. Teacher B wants this, it costs a little bit. And pretty soon, you're north of $7,600 or you're at it.
That's correct.
And from the standpoint of our students, is this, I have some doubts because this seems like we're taking a software holiday, but it isn't a legitimate cut. It's simply a kicking the can down. Well, it's not even a patch. It's simply, you know, it's not changing the oil on your car for another 15,000 miles. You're not doing it a service. You're basically taking a chance that our students will not be harmed by having nothing in place. So...
And pilots are not always free either. So, you know, even next year, if we, you know, find something and we pilot it, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be a free pilot. So we will, regardless of whether this money stays or not, we'll probably be having to find educational supply money to pilot something if we want to trial it, to possibly roll out for the following year.
Okay, so where is everybody on this? What are your thoughts?
I'm concerned about students next school year, students at these elementary, at the elementary level, not getting appropriate and consistent education as far as like the reading program goes. And that worries me a little bit because a year at that age in reading can cost a lot.
We will have to do something for our ESOL population. We cannot just let it be different for every student. We need to be consistent for our subgroup populations who are, sometimes are neediest students. So we will have to do something to address that need. We may not look, you know, K-5, but we will definitely have to look for our LEP students and our economically disadvantaged students to have something in place that's consistent, that we can progress monitor students on, you know, throughout the school year. So we're going to, I mean, if this $7,600 is cut, I still have to figure out how to make sure that I address the needs of our ESOL population and our economically disadvantaged. Because I wouldn't be a good steward of it as an educator if I didn't do that.
Of course not. And you are a good steward, especially with ESOL kids. One more comment, though. So even if we took out this $7,600, we'd still have to put something in for whatever you have to put in place for those ESOL kids, yeah?
Or something else that maybe I funded in previous years that a school may reach out and say, can we buy this? Maybe we won't be able to do that.
Thank you.
We can use, we don't get that much Title III money. Some of it goes for staffing. And we are committed to professional development for our ESOL specialists as well as our classroom teachers to build their capacity to work with ESOL students. So most of our Title III funding goes for professional development and staffing costs to pay for a portion of a teacher.
Okay, so my sense is this is not a true economy and it has risks to our students. So I would ask if that's the sense of the board here right now? Does any, is there anybody who thinks we should go ahead and check this box?
Check, meaning cut it?
Take it, cut it, yes. All right. Well, I have to say, I'm mindful of the time. I think if we continue at this pace, we will be sending somebody out for coffee at Starbucks. Ms., yeah, Ms. Ward will pass out. You had something else to add? Okay, all right, well, let's move on. Reduce lawn field maintenance. Dr. Jones, does this refer to the general government or our efforts?
And this is just actually our lawn maintenance and trying to reduce how many times we're mowed and, you know, some aspects like that. SEVI feels like $5,000 is reasonable that we could do that. There was something else on here that was calling for, I think, the 35 or 40 to go back to the city. We didn't feel like that was reasonable because that wasn't something we could do. But we feel like in the budget, we can make this $5,000 reduction and we'll watch it very carefully to make sure we're mowing adequately and...
All right, Mr. Lawrence and then Ms. Reitinger.
So this is something we could control and we could say, instead of every week, we want to get cut every 10 days, 12 days, 14 days, or something like that. So this would be something we could really realize.
Yes, and if you remember, that was also where, SEVI is working right now on a plan to have different groups adopt the gardens so we can get more volunteer assistance from our community who have said they'd be willing to do that. Because right now, we do have to pay for just, you know, weeding the gardens and things of that nature. So this is very doable. We feel fine with this one. I would encourage us to move on past this one.
All right, next, reduce food purchases. Dr. Jones, if you could...
Mainly, this is when we have teachers in training all day and, oh, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
This was actually mine as I was going through and I decided I was going to put on Mr. Reitinger's hat and do due diligence. We do spend quite a bit of money, you know, literally on food. This is not food for students. As Dr. Jones said, you know, that in certain instances, for example, when we have all-day staff development, when Lisa brings in interview teams and they're interviewing all day, obviously, it is reasonable to provide a lunch, you know, meals for them, you know, as part of that activity. There are other activities in terms of like, you know, coffees, food supplies purchased by guidance offices, things like this that are sort of like nice-to-do sorts of things, but are not necessarily or essential. And in terms of just maintaining enough funds for the staff development and the interviews, that is what this recommendation reflects.
Okay, well, it sounds as if there's, that is doable, so let us move on then. Then the next item, additional 20% reduction in leadership step. I think we've had a discussion about this before and I think it was on our own spreadsheet. Just want to take the temperature of the board about this item here.
Who's leading?
So this makes it 40?
Forty, yes.
Okay, all right, so my mistake. Mr. Reitinger.
So I've taken the role of speaking in favor of this in the past and I'll do it against it. It was my suggestion. And it's not based on fairness or any of those sorts of things. It's just, you know, spreading the pain. It is more pain for administrators than it is for teachers because the teachers are only reducing a, you know, 20% off the recalibration. But it is 20% off a step as opposed to recalibration, maybe a step is more. The other thing I'd say is it is arguably temporary because we'd be giving everybody a step and then next year, we're going to do a recalibration for administrators. And so the scale will be right-sized next year. It is, it doesn't meet your criterion of a long-term cost reduction, Mr. Chairman, because it is a, you know, it is a delay. But it is a delay for one year that saves us money that we could address or not as we are financially able to when we do a recalibration next year. So in the general area of leading from the top and spreading the pain, it's something that I think would be a good thing to do.
Other thoughts? Mr. Lawrence?
We had one person write in and say, what about doing a full step but only halfway through the year? Would that make a difference?
You mean, well, actually, I addressed this in terms, basically, of all the staff, which would be the support, the teachers and the administrators. There are a number of challenges here. For one, we would lose approximately $40,000 in state revenue because we wouldn't meet the requirement to receive those state funds for teacher salary improvements. So in fact, that would reduce about $40,000 in revenue. There are...
This is leadership.
Oh, just leadership?
Yeah, that's the only thing we're talking about right here.
Oh. We haven't had that, I've not addressed that, no.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I know, I was trying not to name it.
So what's the sense of the board about this? And what I would say here is that unless there's a definite yes, we're going to have to come back and squeeze blood out of the stone. So if this is a no-brainer, let's do it. Let's check it off. Otherwise, we'll, let's get through this list and then we'll take another pass through.
I just think this will come back to haunt us if we do this because we're assuming next year, we're going to be funded. I'm not going to go with that assumption. So I'm really uncomfortable doing, taking an additional 20% off of the leadership step.
Yeah, I think for now, we park it and if we have to come back, we come back.
All right, let's move on then. Again, I'm not dismissing anything. I just want to get one pass through this list so we can see where we are. And I'll tell you right now, the running tally, and Mr. Kimball can correct me, we're at 182, 300, is that right? Okay, which is grim. Well, we're taking, this is taking stuff off that came, so we're...
Yeah, so we have to meet that 62,000.
No, 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 we've taken the parking out. We've taken out the parrot, we've put the parrot day back. We put the elementary teacher back. So, all right. Central office rent, I think we've been through that and we can move on there. To the next issue, unless there's any disagreement. Again, I'm not trying to rush through this, but if we've spoken about something, then we've got stuff we haven't. The next issue is eliminate extended-season EPED pay. Dr. Jones, if you could just explain this again. This is postseason.
That's correct. This is actually, and Mr. Horn can jump in if I don't get this right. They do have an EPED for the season. So if you think about coaches and if you are having a successful year, then you go into postseason. So this is actually just paying them for the work that they're doing. And it is literally kind of week by week. I mean, it's, and Mr. Horn, I don't know if you want to jump in. But it's not a bonus. We're winning.
One of the pieces that's missing from this, and it was a recent budget addition and it makes sense for those folks looking for money to include it, but it misses the historical context of the recalibration that was done on the Athletic EPED scale in 2011 when, right, no one was here. So it was Ms. Hi's fault. So we recalibrated that scale to, in all candor, make it equitable. We had some coaches who, whose season length was the same as other coaches but were paid significantly more for no justifiable reason. So all of their contracts were equalized based on length of season from the first start date that Virginia High School League allows to the beginning of their postseason, which is when everybody works, right? And we can't guarantee who's going to continue beyond that. So all of the contract amounts are normalized based on the Virginia High School League calendar. Some programs will extend up to four weeks beyond that. Others will end immediately upon the conclusion of the regular season. So it was equitable to make everyone's contract fit that first period. It's also equitable to pay as their work extends beyond the contract. So while it only comes with success, it is not a bonus for the success. It is actually paid on a per diem. Practice days, competition days, and as soon as the season ends, the pay stops, so...
So when you say per diem, it's a fixed, it's not an hourly amount, it's a per day amount. So if you're, you get as much for Radford as you do for Mason for a particular day.
Yeah, we have, the way we're currently calculating is you get as much for a practice day as you do for a practice day and you get as much for a competition day as you do for a competition day. So if they're competing in Radford, it's the same... for a competition day. So if they're competing in Radford, it's the same amount as if they're competing at George Mason.
So even though you're spending...
Even though you're spending...
A few days on the road, you get the same amount?
Many hours more, right.
Okay. Thoughts?
I'd only say, you know, I'm not, this isn't a game changer for me, but I don't know how Tom feels about the effect on dissuading or sort of disincentivizing folks to want to do this, to coach or to help our kids. So, my thought.
Mr. Reining.
So perhaps we could, there were three different suggestions under EPED generally, and maybe it makes sense to roll the three of them together.
Excellent idea.
One was to eliminate extended season EPED. The original idea had been to reduce EPED by 5% broadly, but just not on a case-by-case basis, but to say, "We're gonna cut the total amount by 5% and the administration can decide where that goes." And then hearing both the view come in that perhaps this was a place from, I forget who had suggested cutting extended season EPED. It was, it's the FCEA and PIAC. It didn't strike me as reasonable to say that there's no extra pay for extended season work, but, you know, I just ballparked it and said, maybe it would be an option to cut that in half. So you'd still get extended season pay, but you wouldn't get paid at the same rate you were during the regular season. I don't much care. I mean, I do care, but I, it just feels to me like this is a place where you could spread just a small amount of pain, and if you spread it broadly enough, it would not as significantly affect anyone. So it strikes me as something to look at. It's not something, you know, that I feel we absolutely have to do to cut any of it or to cut a small amount, but, you know, I'm looking for every $5,000 I can get. And so whether it's $16,000 overall that, you know, even if it's half the extended EPED season pay and the administration gets to decide where they want to cut it or how they want to spread it around, I'm fine with that as well. And, you know, and if the board decides that we don't want to touch EPED, I'm okay with that. I just, I would, this is a place I'd try to take a little bit of money, whatever that level of money is, if I could.
I like your thought pattern. And Tom, do we, can we reduce the per diem for the extended season? Are we allowed to do that according to VHSL?
Yeah, the pay is not normalized by the Virginia High School League. It's not set by the Virginia High School.
So we don't have any, okay, it's just, and we can do whatever we want with that. So if we reduced that amount, what do you think? I'd like to know your opinion as athletic director. How would that go over?
It would not go over well. You have about 60 coaches and many of those coaches are not represented in the professional groups because they don't work here for the school division at any other time. It would be a complete disservice not to advocate their view of this. And that is that many of them took significant pay cuts in 2011 when we normalized their pay seasons. And this was, it was a difficult sell for them, but they understood the equity of the scale now. And then the equity of the scale was promised to them, this extended postseason pay was then promised to them, but because of tight budget times, it was eliminated. So they worked several years with a new scale, significant pay cuts to those 60 folks and not a contract that took into account an additional 30 days' worth of work on a contract that was only 90 days. So it's an additional 30% in some cases. So as, in the realm of spreading the cuts, those 60 folks that would be impacted by the postseason would obviously prefer the 5% reduction that's somewhere else on the page. If they were forced to take A or B, they would prefer that the spread was to everyone and not to just those 60 EPEDs that frankly are paid less per hour of work than any other EPED perhaps that we have. You know, the per diem is not equal to the number of hours that they spend. As we noted, $100 per diem for a 48-hour trip to Radford doesn't amount to much. So from my perspective, the athletic department would be better served by an across-the-board reduction that allowed us to spread the pain as opposed to specifically directing it to the postseason pay. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't say that additional suggestions like changing the rate couldn't also be part of the overall spread of the EPED decrease. The numbers, $50 a practice day and $100 a competition day are, I don't want to say they're arbitrary, because they're not entirely arbitrary, but they're certainly within the purview of the board to say, "We're going to shave something off of that."
Mr. Webb.
So Tom, what do our jurisdictions around us potentially do with, or do you know what they do within that competition, practice kind of rate?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to claim this as something we deserve credit for or blame for, but we're the, we're the only division that I'm aware of that has a specific formula for equalizing the regular season pay and then only paying those coaches that continue to work beyond the regular season. Arlington scale, Fairfax's scale are not based on that. So the Arlington scale, for instance, is a length of season from first possible day to last possible day. And those programs that don't make it to the last possible day just get paid a little bit more than they should. So our attempt was to make every contract fit the same box and then pay afterward. Fairfax, to my knowledge, does not have a formula for determining their EPEDs. So I can't speak to whether or not they account for postseason or not.
So the EPD, the EPED, this last line in light yellow for 28,000, that includes not just the athletic department at the high school, it includes all...
Clubs.
The clubs and everything.
Leader serves.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Reining. And Ms. Webb, are you...
Let me just offer one thing. It, so I may be wrong. Maybe I'm overreading people as agreeing with me, but there at least, I've heard some general notion that maybe we can squeeze a little bit out here. If instead of 5%, we cut it back to 2% of the total EPED to be spread as the administration likes, that'd be $11,440. It's not a lot of money, but it's just a, it's a little slice. It gets us a little farther and, you know...
I think you're talking about two different things. Like, I don't see anything wrong with the 5% reduction across the board.
Yeah, all we're really talking about is the extended.
That's fair. It seems fair to me, equitable. It's an EPED reduction in general.
Well, I mean, again, I think you can, that's true, but we're asking people to take time over and above what they're doing.
So what I'm saying is, extra pay for extra duty is when you want to be a club sponsor or a coach or any other after-school activity that's beyond your contract hours. So if you take one of these positions, usually you do it because you love the sport or you love the activity. And yes, you should get paid extra for your extra time, but the difference between the eliminating extended season EPED pay is that those coaches wouldn't get paid at all. So in other words, they're gonna be penalized for having a successful season. Whereas if you reduce EPED across the board, that just goes to everybody. It's gonna get a 5% reduction, sort of like what we're doing to administration with the 20% reduction. Does that make sense? And really, I know, from my experience, EPED, you don't get paid a lot anyway. And I don't think, I really don't think a 5% reduction is really gonna scare people away from being club sponsors and coaches.
If I could just maybe make a suggestion, because I think we still have to find quite a bit. And it looks like there's some general agreement somewhere between 2% and 5%, if we have to reduce EPEDs. I, from the school superintendent's side, I'd like to not touch them at all. I think the people who work after school and weekends and night for our children are the heart often of our school system because that's what makes a lot of children want to go to school. You know, it's all of those extras that make school what it is. So if we could find a way by the time we're done to not have to cut 11 or 28, that would be, you know, my request. I just think they work really hard for what they earn, and they earn so little per hour as it is.
They're not hourly positions, so we shouldn't even be talking about it.
All right. So ultimate consensus here, if any, or do you want to move on? Where are people on this?
I'll say I'm with the 5% because it's across the board and it's not all of it. It's just like to Margaret's point, you know, say you make 100 bucks.
Here's, I'll make it even simpler. Do we want to, do we want to get through this now or do we want to come back to it?
I'd say we vote on getting it through then.
I'd say the reduction overall, but I'd like to revisit the extended season EPED pay, maybe do something that like Phil was saying, maybe at 5,000 or 2,000.
So that could be considered as part of the 5% within the...
No, no, no.
Or we increase, you know, athletic fees. I know you don't like that, but...
But I thought we already did. We took that out?
No, no, we took that out.
Oh.
Well, but no, I don't think anybody's talking about both eliminating extended season and doing an across-the-board 5%.
Pizza's for closers.
Well, they're both listed. I didn't know if...
Right, no, you're right. They're both listed.
They're both listed.
But we also have some things that are listed multiple times at different rates. So it's two ways of getting an EPED, but I don't hear anybody saying let's do both.
All right, well, let's, let's move on and we'll come back to this. All right. Summer computer fees. I know Ms. Ward...
I do not agree with $100 for the summer computer fee. That's ridiculous. I will, I will agree to the $50. That's reasonable and it's reasonable for most families. But $100 is just ridiculous for having a computer for three months.
Mr. Sharpton T. A.
And I would also add that if you were to ask for $100 over three summers, then some people might be better off just buying a tablet instead of renting out the computer.
You're going places as an entrepreneur.
Mr. Lawrence.
Speaking as someone who's got a child going into high school next year, I support taking this to 50 or, you know, heading up more toward 100. He also plays lacrosse. I support athletic fees increasing and he might want to drive. And I'll support parking fees too because he's already, he's making more money than any 14-year-old should, so...
Okay, so is there a general, what's the general view on 50? Is there support for that here? All right. All right, now we only have 182,000, well, 177,300. 177,300, okay. We have more discussion of parking fees. I, we'll go back to parking fees. All right, now we have, in the orange zone, we have the reduce IB exam fees. We've discussed that and it's, the attorney general's opinion would say that's a non-starter. IB mid-year assessments, that doesn't have a dollar value assigned to it. Do we...
Which one?
Reduce, eliminate IB mid-year assessments?
Yeah, that's not, it's programmatic.
That's programmatic, all right. iPads at Jesse Thackeray and Mount Daniel, those are committed contractually and would not save money. Return mowing and tree trimming to general government. We've discussed that. We won't be able to push that off. Let's see. NYPD coordinator, part-time gifted teacher, .5 FTE para, reduce one photocopier per building. These are all, I think, really, unless somebody stopped me if you have a different thought, but transfinder transportation software.
Before passing, I've written that.
Sure.
So I admit I continue to struggle with this one. Not, you know, thinking that we should probably try to get rid of all the photocopiers outside of elementary, but understanding that that's a problem. And I, you know, to be frank, I hear, I hear different stories when I talk to people about how much the photocopiers outside of elementary are in fact used. All that said, I might suggest that we try to do something along those. In my last submission, I said, "Instead of one photocopier per building," which is a nice $28,000, "but I wonder if you could say, reduce one photocopier or take two photocopiers and make them smaller." So you'd have two half-size copiers. So ask for $7,000 out of photocopier reduction as opposed to 28. And maybe this sounds like salami slicing because it actually is. But, you know, it's just, I get that the principals may not want to lose one big copier per building, but I think it can come down at least some.
Are there, are we driving Cadillacs when we could be in Chevys on the photocopier department?
In fact, from, and I could just speak from a purely, and again, you know, like the central office rent, I mean, there are contracts leases with appropriation clauses. There are two photocopiers currently whose leases are up. One is at Mount Daniel and that would be one of the two that they currently have, and the other is at the GM office. And I think the GM had indicated that if they were to lose a photocopier, that the one in the GM office was the one that they would go to first if they were faced with that. So it's almost like serendipitously, if in fact this is the will of the board, you know, we have a contract that is now, you know, expired and is up for renewal. And I've talked to our representative at Xerox about that. And it also is the one that, you know, that was identified by the building, that if we have to lose one, that's the one we'd like to lose. In terms of the exact costs associated with that machine, I may have to do some real quick figuring, but...
But I think the question is, is there a $21,000 model that would replace a 28, or a, you know, a $6,500 model that would replace a $7,000 model?
I think in those instances, there would probably be buyout expenses on the older model in terms of downsizing to the larger model. In, you know, in terms of the actual photocopier usage, the, you know, our rep did after our discussion, you know, give us, you know, data on usage. And it appears honestly to be significant, you know, on each machine. To be perfectly honest, I really can't answer that question, you know, I think fully tonight. But I think in terms of identifying savings, I do, there is something that does leap to the fore. I think, I think taking, you know, taking, like you said, a $7,000 machine and then downsizing to a $5,000 machine, there would be contract implications there in terms of buyout and those sorts of things. But, you know, that is entirely possible, I suppose.
Okay, Mr. Webb.
For me, I just have, I, hearing the teachers, the administrators that were here last week, I still just have a very hard time spending $135,000 on that many copiers in the building. I just have the hardest time of doing that, that we're at a budget time right now, that we're right now pulling stuff out and putting stuff back in. Copiers are things that if you want to be inconvenienced, you will walk up and down the stairs and you will use one versus if you're trying to put in new teachers, you're trying to add back in a paraprofessional day. $135,000 is a lot of money just for copiers where we're trying to get to a point in time that we're trying to go paperless, being environmental, using, being more, a little bit more environmentally conscious, but we're spending $135,000 on copiers. I just have a hard time swallowing spending that much money on the copiers. And that's just me. If ultimately, we end up doing it, that's fine, but I just, I just find it very hard for me to swallow spending that much money on something that you're just outside of potentially the elementary school. I get it, a little bit more there. But at the other schools, I have a, well, elementary, both Mount Daniel and TJ, I get maybe them using a little bit more in the way of a paper and doing some of those things there. But at MEH and George Mason, I just have a hard time that you're running thousands of copies to that point, having that many, needing two to three copiers in the building. And if you still need, I get it, you need it, but... And if you still need, I get that you need it, but if you have to wait in the line or you have to circle back around again, oh, well, we're giving you another paraprofessional. We're giving you, making sure that you're taken care of in those kind of ways, that you may have to do a little bit more walking sometimes.
Okay. Mr. Sharpen T A, I believe, had his hand up.
I'm just going to say that I see where you're coming from, but I live that life every day, and I can tell you those copiers are necessary. Are you going to have, you're going to have some angry teachers on your hand, you know, we, we, wait in line, but then guess what? You have your class, you have to go to your class. It's not like you can wait there all day. And you could get there early and somebody else is getting there early. You can stay late, other people are staying late. It's just that you get rid of one copier, one copier. It's going, I can tell you, I mean, I can almost tell you with almost certainty, just based on my experience, you're going to have a problem and you're going to have upset teachers. And right now, we're trying to make our teachers happy. That's what the community keeps telling us. We want, and with good reason, we want to make our teachers happy. We want them to be, you know, happy teachers are better teachers. And you don't want grumpy teachers because I couldn't, I couldn't copy what I needed today for today's lesson, so now I've got to wing it. You know, so it does, it ends up having farther-reaching effects than you realize. It's not just about waiting in line. It could affect an entire lesson, and then that teacher's plans are, you know, thrown off. I'm just saying, I just have to say that, I mean, I don't care, you guys can talk about all you want, but I can tell you, and I'm speaking firsthand, it would be very difficult.
Well, I think we're asking, it is an inefficiency tax that we're imposing on people who are engaged in teaching. So without, I'm not getting rid of this issue, but I think let's, in the interest of keeping this process moving, let's move through this and park that. The next, the next issue after the photocopier is, and we're still at 177,300, Transfinder transportation software. There was some additional email traffic about that and comment that this doesn't yield any efficiencies. I'm not sure it won't impose costs if we don't have it, but where, what do, we had talked about getting some data about what benefits this produces and, you know, somehow it produces benefits. It would be a good time to hear about it.
Well, I'll challenge Nancy because she's not here, but it is very uncharacteristic to have a school division with 2,500 students and you don't have software for your buses. And I think you heard Nancy say, one area that we struggle to keep up with is when we enroll a student and they go into Power School, we don't have any sort of system that tells us that student's automatically on that bus, from Nancy's standpoint. So where they really struggle is even keeping the bus list up to date. When we have a bus accident, we need to know who's supposed to be on that bus, who are those students who are riding. Now beyond that, yes, Nancy has been calculating the routes, but I also know, and Hunter could chime in on this as well, she has come to us every year, the last three years, to tell us she can't do it, that she needs help. It's been longer than that, and we have given her no staff, and this is a way that will, it will have efficiencies as we get to full implementation because you plug all of the GPS routing information in there, and when a big development is happening on Broad Street or somewhere else and we have to change the routes, it's helping her automate, and it is going to have long-term efficiencies. Doesn't mean we're still not going to need staff, but right now, what we're asking of that department is unrealistic, and this was one way. And not only do we feel like it's unrealistic, and other school divisions have software, whether it's this brand or another brand, but, you know, we also have to look at it from the staffing side because right now, and FY18 is going to be just as tough of a budget probably, and we've got to continue to operate efficiency. And our efficiency study said, you need to get software. And then after we did our efficiency study, we went back out again with a transportation specialist, different company, that came in, looked at our transportation, said you need software, and actually even suggested Transfinder. So I do, I do feel like it's essential, and I feel like it's a safety issue as well as an efficiency issue.
That's what I was going to ask you. It sounds like it's more of, you know, it helps Nancy, and it keeps us from having to hire someone to help Nancy because I'm sure it would be more expensive to hire even someone part-time. But what concerns me most is the safety and knowing where those kids are and what bus they're on at any given time. I really, I really have a hard time with this, with getting rid of that for those reasons, mainly from the safety standpoint.
Other thoughts? Mr. Lawrence?
I agree. I see it as a safety issue, and it was recommended by our efficiency study, and I think we need to keep it.
All right. Let's keep this parked for now. So just, here's my thought. We're almost at the bottom of this list. We need to, I think it's 10:19 now, I would suggest maybe taking five to 10 minutes, and then we'll do it again. The next issue we have is Mount Daniel Assistant Principal, either reducing it to .4 FTE or reducing it altogether. I think that is an unpalatable option that we could talk about now, but I think we've all been through it before, and I would suggest we just move past this for now. We have central office reductions, which we have discussed, and so that pretty much takes us through. We're at 177,300. Mr. Reidinger.
There's one other big-ticket item that I propose that's not on this list, and that is changing how we budget for salaries and benefits. And I don't know if you want to do that before or after the break, but it is.
Let's do it now.
All right. So one of the very helpful inputs I think we got was from a conservative citizen who did take a look and did some work on actuals and looked at where we had historically been broad categories underspent based on what the budget is. And the one that leapt out as being the place that we historically had the largest amount of unspent funds was salary and benefits. To the tune of, the smallest in the last three years was an underspend of $270,000. One year was approaching a million, and another year was, I believe, around $670,000 or $680,000. And in further inquiry and talking to Hunter and Dr. Jones, the, we were told that the way, the reason that comes about is that we budget based on sort of a perfect hiring system as opposed to a realistic hiring system. So we assume a certain level of teacher, a certain level of administrator, and I think we also probably assume that those positions are full all the time so that at least over the last three years, it's always, you know, you could hire a teacher that is immediately, that is more than the budgeted, than the step that you're expecting or projecting. But at least historically, it looks like we've been underspending.
For the past two years.
Past three.
Well, what we've been under, to varying levels.
Yes, to varying levels. But, yeah, as I said, I didn't do the analysis, but nobody's told me it's wrong. So it feels to me like, while it's, it is in effect equivalent to reducing a contingency, perhaps, that we ought to budget, we ought to sail more close to the wind in terms of what we think we're actually going to spend. And if historically, we think we're not going to have the full expense for all of salary and benefits based on vacancy rate or hiring at lower, or whatever statistically is shown to be true, that we ought to perhaps move away from budgeting based on a perfect hiring record and instead move to budgeting based on a realistic hiring record. And it's not like it's an insignificant amount of money, the, if you, if you assume, you know, just, I said, because I needed, I needed to, you know, I was working at the end to just say, how do I get to zero, right? And this was my way to get to zero. So at the end of my cuts, I was still roughly $49,000 short. So I pegged the salary and benefits cut at .12%. So you just say, we're going to, and that was only $49,200. But, you know, the salary and benefits number is so huge that even small reductions in budgeting give you a balanced budget. This completely fails the test that the chairman set is, does it actually reduce any expenditures? It doesn't. It is, in that sense, a budgeting trick, but it is a budgeting trick that I think is more realistic in the amount that we'll actually spend. It reduces flexibility for sure in the event that something bad happens, and one could exceed it. But I think it's a realistic way to try to get to the number we need to try to get to with fewer of the more painful and in-advance cuts. So I would sacrifice some flexibility later for more close-to-the-line budgeting exercise now.
Ms. Kimble?
Certainly. And in going back, Mr. Reidinger did bring this up, and going back and analyzing the past three years, in terms of the category of salaries, he is correct, that in terms of budgeting salaries, we put in the actual people, lane and step, where they're currently at, where we anticipate that they will be. For vacancies, we have gone back, have worked with Lisa and her staff to say, okay, of the new hires who've come in, you know, especially for teaching staff because they're, you know, obviously the most expensive, you know, who are the new hires and where do we bring them in? And then, you know, average that out. And interestingly enough, over the three years we've been doing it, it's come out pretty consistently in an MA 30 Step 9, that, you know, we do hire some BA 2s, we hire some MA 30 Step 15s, but on average, it comes in at that. And so there is, you know, a methodology that has been employed. As far as the salary piece goes, I have to be honest, I am not comfortable changing that methodology. If you go back over the past three years, two years, there were significant savings in the tune of, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, $200,000, $300,000. Those were the result of vacancies, that positions that we were not able to fill that we had planned, some foreign language, reading specialists. We had a mid-year resignation of a principal that we did not fill that position. And, you know, frankly, you know, that is, that's not the normal way that we've operated. I will say that in the third year, FY 13, that the quote-unquote savings, the surplus in the salaries was $25,000 that year. We mean, we pretty much hit it right on the nose that year because we didn't, we weren't having those particular issues. You know, to be frank, from my standpoint, there may be some leeway in the benefits area. Where it is, I'm not sure. It may be in the, and I know Dr. Jones doesn't agree with me, but it's one of these areas. Again, it's a risk because, and I'll be honest, because what we've done is, since this budget process has become so protracted, normally we would have a budget right now in doing contracts, we finished open enrollment. So Davida Godetisa, our benefit specialist, has been able to provide me, okay, here are the people, you know, in FY 16 this year, and this is the health insurance they had, you know, here are the people in FY 17 and the health insurance they've included. And honestly, our, the assumptions that we made that people would pretty much stick with the health insurance that they have has held true. So the wild card in this would be the new hires, what health insurance, if any, they, you know, they would choose. But in terms of looking at surpluses in the previous years, the area where, you know, if we're going to go down that route, I would be more comfortable, would be to look in the area of benefits and tweaking those. That said, when you look at the budget holistically over those years, it's like, oh, you had all this wonderful underspending, you know, in the salaries and benefits category. That is true, you know, for two of those years, and in year three, that was primarily mostly in the benefits area and not in the salary. But if you look at the budget as a whole, you realize there were other needs that came up during the year primarily related to our building services, whether it's the GM roof, the GM floor, whether it's plumbing at TJ, plumbing at Mary Ellen Henderson, a number of items that frankly, you know, we had to shift the monies to. It's not that we were sitting on this money and it went into carryforward, and in fact, our fund balance over the past two years has actually been dropping. So it's not that we've been realizing the savings and hoarding the money and carrying it forward, we've been, you know, we've been spending it on other things. I think to Mr. Reidinger's point, you know, if we were to go down that route, my recommendation would be, again, looking at historic spending patterns. If we were to reduce salaries and/or benefits, instead of, you know, reducing that, maybe take it from there and put it into building services because there's also a very strong track record there that the school, that we have not been budgeting enough to maintain our buildings. And in fact, the school board, two years ago, decreased the amount of our annual routine building maintenance for these projects by about $100,000.
Going through the same process.
Going through this, yes, going through the same process. And so that's my concern. It's kind of like, you know, what pocket do you want to put it into? And to be perfectly honest, you know, Tony and I talked about, I said, well, why don't we just put it in the contingency and it's there, and if, you know, if the new hires, you know, come out or we end up needing the money, we can take it out of contingency. The problem is, honestly, people look at the contingency and they see it as a big slush fund. They do. And we can explain it till we're blue in the face, but it's like, that's just money you don't need, that you're being greedy and you're asking for more. When in fact, what happens is there are needs that come up during the year, whether it's we have more special ed tuition. This year, we had, we doubled the number of students going to the Arlington Career Center. We had to address that. There were building issues we had to address this year. And, you know, and honestly, personally, you know, as the finance director here, I understand, you know, there's risk with budgeting, and you do assume some risk, you know. But when you start cutting everything, you leave yourself absolutely no leeway. So if something goes wrong in one area, you've, you know, and you've left yourself, you know, vulnerable in others. So that's my long-winded way of saying, if you, I understand where you're coming from, and, but I would caution against the salary areas, perhaps in the benefit areas, there does seem to be, you know, some law of averages and, you know, at work there. You know, the issue is, you know, at this point, because we budget for, you know, exactly, you know, Jane Doe at this amount, and we know that Jane Doe is taking, you know, Kaiser Family, and that she's in VRS, and da-da-da-da, that actually the benefits are not, you know, they're not estimated benefits, they're actually benefits that are run on what people are taking. Now, and again, those things change during the years, you know, people go through their own spouses, open enrollment may go on, may go off. Anyway, I've said enough, but thank you.
Just one component that Hunter mentioned, we don't have hard-to-fill positions this year. So when you think about even last year, the computer science was budgeted at like that $106,000. We couldn't, this year, we couldn't fill it, but this year, because the positions are at elementary, I fully anticipate our positions will all be filled. We don't have computer science or Spanish or some of those other areas that are more difficult. So just from the hiring side.
Other thoughts? Thousand-yard stairs now here. Mr. Reidinger?
Perhaps I could just respond briefly to Hunter. The, I don't dispute that, you know, we need more contingency funds. I just think if it's contingency funds, even if it's politically impalatable, we ought to call them contingency funds. And that we should not, we need to budget as accurately as possible in salary and benefits. And I'm by no means suggesting that we say, we think we're going to have, let's budget less than we need and then pay for it out of contingency. I'm saying, let's make sure we budget for what we think we will actually need, and even if, you know, if people are uncomfortable in saying that, you know, we still need, then let's put that in the contingency fund. And let's call the contingency fund what it is and say, it's $300,000 instead of $150,000. But let's, you can't manage what you've misdescribed, even unintentionally. And so I want to, I just want to label things what they really are and budget for what we really think we're going to spend so that the administration can, but can manage it accurately, and the school board can provide oversight in the right way without micromanaging what you do with that. So that's my speech.
Other thoughts? All right. Let us take, it's now, it is 10:32, so let us convene at 10:37. Five minutes. So with that, I'm happy to hear other thoughts. Mr. Lawrence?
I agree. I think it'd be more honest, although it doesn't help us budget-wise, to call it what it is and put it into contingency if we were going to do it. I think, otherwise, it really would be a budget trick, which I think we should avoid.
Other thoughts, Ms. Renkuma?
While I see Phil's point, my only concern is anything that goes into contingency will just attract a little more pressure. So I would rather things, the point is, yes, you budget, and there may be some apparent fluff, in a sense, it doesn't always get filled, or there are delays in hiring, and so there's something there. But I'd rather it stay there. So for real emergency, I'd rather you cut a teacher, or you cut some program, and then we're forced to make the adjustments there, than put it in contingency. Because once it's seen in contingency, the general perception is, free money, let's go after it. That's my fear, that if it goes into contingency, they'll find some way to spend it, which really puts you right on the edge. At least, that's mine.
Could we, what is the procedure for tapping the contingency?
That a recommendation or request is brought to the school board, and the school board must approve a transfer from the contingency. Yeah. Which we do every year.
All of which is to say, that is not just ready for the tapping. It does have to be identified and approved.
And by the way, the auditors do check this every year. They check the school board minutes to make sure that's approved if any money is transferred out of the contingency. We are.
But, you're right. But we also hear from general government, our colleagues on the other side, every time they see a little money sitting out there, they're all over it. And so while we have to approve it, the question becomes, why don't you tap into that? And we've had those conversations in the last couple of years.
And I think the answer this year is, we did expend the full contingency. So in any event, we now come back up to the top, we have to find 177. Mr. Lawrence?
Two questions. Two things that got dropped, and I don't know if I missed it. One, you were going to talk to PYP about whether we could have two schools with one fee.
That is a no. We have two schools, there will be two fees. And if we'd like to do anything with Jesse Thackeray, that would be another fee.
And I'm not advocating for that.
Okay. So much for that one. And also, I thought we had all agreed that we were going to forego the raises from last year. And I don't know if that was factored in.
I think that's in there.
I saw one school board salary.
No, it's, that's your topic.
I kept looking.
No, it's in there.
There, yes. It's the fifth item down from the top on the first page, other salary reductions, school board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There was one member who indicated they would forego their salaries for the entire year.
Okay, so, having gone through the first pass, we are short $177,300?
$177,000.
$300.
$300.
Okay. Are we really?
Can you tell us what was pulled out?
Yes.
Are those teachers?
Use the microphone, Ms. Ward.
So, the $106,000, is that, I know that includes salary as well as benefits, is that at an entry level? Or what level?
That's an MA Step, MA 30 Step 9.
MA 30.
And that's what we budget for vacancies, because that's been the average over the last two to three years.
Is it possible to fill that position?
Only if you direct staff to put a cap on hiring.
Right. Which, and Ms. Hi and Dr. Jones could speak to this, but right now, we cap at a Step 15, in terms of new teachers coming in. You know, if you cap it at a Step 8, or a Step 9, or 10, yes, but there's no guarantee that the best qualified candidate will not come in, on average, at your MA 30 Step 9. That's been the experience. And I've already talked to them about that. It was not well received, no.
And just to, I go as tight as I possibly can. A lot of times, people are saying, can I justify other years of experience? And I make them send me a report on experience to justify why I will go any higher. So I try to be as tight on the salary that we give to staff as possible, just so that we can save as much money to the division as possible. So I mean, if they're at, they have 11 years, and maybe one of them was a private school, I might not give them that private school year. Or I may say, oh, you started in October, so I'm not going to give you the full year, even though you only missed one. And a lot of times, they'll come back and request, but I'm pretty stingy.
I just wanted to see if Mr. Kimball had been able to find what the value for that one aging GM office copier was.
And actually, I was mistaken. It's an aging TJ copier, but it's about $3,300, would be about $3,300. I was able to find the spreadsheet. And just also, in terms of the new hire process, again, because this process, this whole budget process has become protracted, not only did I work with Lisa's staff in terms of the open enrollment, but I also worked with Molly Narburg in HR to say, okay, of these vacant positions that we know about, that we've been out hiring, and Lisa and principals and Tony and staff have really been very active recruiting and hiring, okay, I literally went in and did the analysis about, okay, who's leaving, and then who's replacing them? And it was kind of comical, because I'd be going through, putting it through, I'm like, yeah, 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 okay, we're up to $60,000. And it's like, yeah, it's like the Dow Jones, you know? And it was actually up to about, I was up to about $50,000. But literally, one hire of a lower-paid staff going out with a hired person coming in, ate up almost $30,000 of that. But at this point, I mean, we are about $20,000 to the good, but we still have a lot of positions.
Principals.
Yeah. And still have a number of principals to hire.
Okay, so I would entertain suggestions for how we should close this gap.
Well, I keep saying we're not that far, because, I mean, I know Margaret doesn't like the increase in parking fees and athletic fees, but I don't think, Margaret, you're saying, don't have any increases at all.
I think Tom made it pretty clear, it's only $25, right, additional per athlete, but in that, for the first sport. And then after that, they get, what's the second sport, 100?
20.
Oh, it's 25. So I'm not totally opposed to the athletic fees, but what I am opposed is more of a, I just don't believe in the double whammy here. Like, either take out that reduction in athletic supplies, or the athletic fees, but don't do both. It really just doesn't look right, for one thing. And you really shouldn't be hitting up for both of those. And as far as the parking, how much is this $10,000 increase going to cost our students?
It would take it from.
This was going from 200 to 300. That's right. This was going from 200 to 300. And I will say that that one is the one that gave the high school admin a little bit of heartburn, they felt like 250 would be more reasonable.
Yeah. I mean, why not? I mean, why not, instead of taking it all together, reduce, cut it in half? I mean, isn't that what we're doing, a lot of the Solomon's decisions here?
250 would be 5,000.
So we'll increase athletic fees by 10, and student parking fees by 5. Is that the proposal?
Or, and if you're going to increase the athletic fees in, then take out that reduction in athletic supplies.
Right, that's out, so.
Okay, so if that's out, let's take that out.
It's out?
Well, it was out when we did our last pass.
Oh, you're going to disagree with me, are you?
170.
So taking that, so that out puts us at 177,300. Mr. Reitinger?
So, since I can lean back and be out of Margaret's swinging range, when I say, I'm going to support the thing that she just said she wouldn't, which is, first off, the reduction of the athletic expenditures is a bit of a misnomer, because it's not $12,000 off what we're spending now, it was to hold us constant from last year. So we had $40,000 in the budget last year, and the proposal was not to go up $12,000 to $52,000 this year. So it's actually not a double whammy, it's just holding it constant. Second, for the reasons that we talked about last time, I think we can generate a reasonable amount of funds, and as long as that there's a means to exempt out people who cannot afford athletic fees, I think increasing athletic fees by $25 to generate a reasonable amount of money is a very reasonable thing to do. And I support, I'm going to cause a bad article in The Lasso about me, but I'm going to go ahead and do it anyway. I support raising student parking fees to what the market will bear, because I think it's important, we don't want people to drive, we want them to walk, we want them to bike. Driving to school is, in fact, a privilege, it's not a right. I know it discernentially affects certain people, but I think it's in the long-term interest of where the city wants to. interest of where the city wants to go as a walkable city. And again, if we can, I, 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 so now I'm starting to preach, and I'm just going to shut up.
I just want to say something about this walkable city. It is not walkable, okay? I don't want kids riding bikes, and I know you ride your bike, and God bless you, I appreciate you do that, but I've seen kids ride bikes, I've seen the way people drive around here, I've seen people run red lights repeatedly, several times a day. I don't want kids riding their bikes to school. I'm just saying, if we lived in a nice little community with nice little, real bike paths and real, you know, people that drove normally, that'd be different. But we don't. So that's off the table for me.
Okay.
So, Mr. Lawrence.
Just like I said before, I would support increasing all of them, even though I'll be paying them for four years.
So I, I believe last we were at increasing athletic fees by 10 and student parking fees by 5, is that? Are, are we good with that provisionally? That takes us down to 160?
So you're talking 250 or the $300 student fee? For parking?
Parking is 250.
Okay.
Which 5,000, is that correct?
Correct.
And then keeping athletic.
Increase athletic fees.
And then increasing the athletic fees.
Right, so now we're at 167, no.
And we've got to be more than that.
162,300.
Can I just, hold on, hold on, let me go back to those athletic, the athletic, what is this called, supplies. I'll go back to our athletic director. How, how would that affect our athletic department by, I guess, keeping the athletic supplies flat?
I, I think as we've tried to sort of explain, the athletic fees are calculated to generate an amount of money that are exactly equal to what we were previously spending on equipment and supplies. And that number this fiscal year will be at about 52,000, which is, which accounts for the $12,000 that was in the original proposed budget increase over the 40,000, meaning the 40,000 was under accounting for how much we were taking in in fees before. So we were collecting 52, and we were spending 40 on equipment and supplies. If we raise the fees and we don't raise the equipment and supply spending, we'll be taking in about 60,000, but spending only 40,000 of it on equipment and supplies. So the question would then be for Mr. Kimball, is there another appropriate place for those funds to be spent in the athletic realm that would reduce a different category?
And as we discussed at a previous work session, the most logical place would probably be referees. That was, that was proffered.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait.
Yes, athletic officials.
Right, what, I, I think what Mr. Kimball is saying is that rather than put that money back into equipment and supplies, leave it as Mr. Reitinger has proposed at 40,000, but move it to professional services, which is where we pay for officials. So the, the professional services number would come down?
The professional services number would actually stay the same, but the, the funding source for paying those officials would change from city appropriation to student activity fees, and therefore it would drop the city transfer by that amount.
I just want to just recap what you both told me, just to make sure I understand. So the athletic supplies, instead of putting the extra athletic fees towards athletic supplies, and we are, we're good with athletic supplies, we don't have to worry, there's not going to, if we don't increase that part of the budget, it's not going to affect, have a negative effect on our, our athletes?
We would be able to operate at the current level. If we don't, if we leave it at the current level, we'll be able to continue to operate at that level.
Okay. And then, so as long as the extra money is not going to subsid, the, the, what the athletes are paying, I, I got a little worried. It sounded like we were, there, these kids are going to be subsidizing part of the, a budget that didn't, that didn't affect them in any way. And I, I get it now, I, I didn't quite understand. So what you're saying is that extra, the extra 12,000 will go to paying for?
Like athletic officials.
Officials.
Okay, then it supports paying athletic officials for the.
How much do, does that normally run?
We spend, we spend about 50,000, but only 32 of it is in professional services, and the other is later transferred from school gate receipt accounts.
So that's 50,000 across all sports?
For all sports.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, so I, I just want to make sure, so we're, we're going to go with 10 on the, hold on. So increase athletic fees, 10. Increase student park, student parking fees, 5. Then reduce professional services, 10? Is that correct, or is that?
It's athletic supplies flat on page one.
Keep, keep the line item for athletic, like at 40,000.
Okay, we'll keep that, we'll keep that flat then.
That's page one, right, just down past the middle.
So that, now we're only at 162,300. I believe.
Actually, let's see, actually, I've, with the addition of the utilities, the lawn, the food, and the computers, I've got 153,000.
Okay, well, then, I, I trust you, because I, my Excel is, I, I'm not competent there. Okay.
What do we add back in?
From the green, what was added in from the green was student parking fees to increase it from 200 to 250, to increase the athletic fees as previously discussed. And then for the athletic materials. Surely, for the athletic materials, there used to be one over here, but I, the, to leave that item in, to leave it flat at 40,000, and to take the, the additional revenue, anticipated revenue, and use that to pay for athletic officials.
That's what it yelled at. So what I meant was like, I know we went through this before, and we added back some things from the green, not, not just the stuff we discussed, like, we added back an elementary teacher, right? Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
That's why it's so, so off.
Yeah, so that's, like 106,000. That's what I was asking about, if we can maybe make that smaller. And is there anything else, did we add anything else back in? So basically, we have 111,800 that we added back in.
Well, once we've added the elementary, or, or, let's say, not filling one of those three elementary positions, we're currently at 43,500 that we need to find. No, 43.
But that's higher than two of the three.
Right, correct.
I don't know. I can't think anymore.
Yeah, because that's why I couldn't figure out why we were so high. It seemed like we were artificially.
Yeah.
Well, the.
We took out too much.
There was reduced one elementary teacher, that was taken out, and it was.
The paraprofessional day was put back, it was taken out, so it was not reduced.
So we're good.
And the computer fee, that was 45, that was taken out.
Right, because it's increased.
But then we, but then, right, but then we, right.
It's taken out at 45, but put back in at 50.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Okay, so that's right, I didn't account for that, because it was listed twice.
We're at 40? We're at 43,500.
Okay, well, at the risk of being unhappy with people we all work with a lot, I would say we take the additional 20% for leadership. And I don't, I, I, I feel like I'm saying I don't want to do this every single time I talk, but I don't want to do this, but we're getting down to the point where we need to get to zero.
That's 32,500.
EPED, we're at 5% reduction?
I don't think.
You hadn't done that yet.
Didn't have either of those. One, one question about EPED, what's the split between sports and non-sports?
The amount of money?
Well, yeah, I guess it comes down.
Number? Think about.
I couldn't give you that off the top of my head, that's one of those that I'd have to look up.
Is it 90% sports and 10% other, or 50/50? I mean.
It's predominantly sports, I would say.
No, just the certs alone.
But you're talking sports, those coaches, that, all the assistant coaches, it's primarily athletics.
So increase athletic fees. I can find a line, you're discussing. Well, no, I'm just thinking if we, and I know Tony hates this, as do we all, but if we did the 5% across the board, and just said that it should be proportional, not, you know, only for clubs or only for sports, if that would be more fair. Okay, well, say it.
And when you're talking about EPEDs, it's not just athletics, it would be student activities and instructional, which would be your teacher leaders, which are your certs, that would be your team leaders, department chairs at the high school. So if you're doing 5% across the board, it, it will impact every category, instruction, athletics, and student activities.
And I think Hunter, was that 25,000 if it was 5%?
About 28.
Oh, right, okay.
So if you put that in, what are we there for? So are we leaving, are we leaving the leadership additional decrease in or not?
My suggestion was that it go in.
Okay. And then, the, the, with the EPEDs.
Now, the EPED, it would be, it would not be a 5% reduction in EPED posts, it would be a 5% reduction across the board in money.
Wouldn't it include post?
Well, that's my question, I, I didn't think it would, I wouldn't, if we had.
The post rate would also be reduced by 5%, because it still falls under EPE.
Right, no, 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 I was thinking if there are 100 positions that fall under this, it's not eliminating five positions.
Oh, no.
It's 100.
Somebody gives 5 cents less per dollar.
Just, so taking out, or others, say, we're taking out an additional 20%, i.e., making it a 40% leadership team reduction, and then also looking at the.
Yes.
Well, basically, at this point, you know, and that's a matter of semantics, because if, if you reduce this, if you reduce the step by four, increase by 40%, you're basically taking the entire leadership scale and moving it backwards. And so my recommendation would be, would just be to leave the leadership team on the steps that they're at, and just give them whatever increase they would have gotten minus 40%. So give them 60% of what they would have, would have received. But again, it's, it's semantics.
Would that number be the same?
It would be, be, it would be exactly the same. But, but at any rate.
Hunter, just, minor footnote, my suggestion would be to give everybody a step, but reduce each of the step raises by 40%, because then people have the step, and you can capture back what you lost in recalibration if you can afford it. Whereas if you don't give them the step when you recalibrate, they've, yeah, they, you can't make them whole later if resources are available.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Very good.
Does that change your math?
Nope, it's, math is exactly the same. Well, and, and with the 5% EPED reduction is $3,900. You know, Mr. Rancum, if you, if you forwent your school board salary, that could fill the hole. Yes.
How much is it? No, but we only need 3,000, right?
Well, then we, then we say we take out 3,900.
Take it from the copiers.
Honestly, for 3,900, take it from the contingency. I mean, that's going to take us down to what, 148?
150. No, actually, we take. The dues and memberships.
I was going to say, cut, cut the tree, more than tree trimming, just on the last.
Okay, Phil's going to really like me now. What's the deal with the Mount Daniel, no, was it Mount TJ office cop?
It, it, it would be the, the smaller copier at, at Thomas Jefferson, that would still leave them three photocopiers there for the bill.
There's more than one in the office, though, right?
Uh, no. The photocopier in the, in the Thomas Jefferson office? At Thomas Jefferson or in the office?
In the office.
There are, I think there are four. And one in the office.
I counted that as one of the three.
It's. Microphone. It's four. Trust me, it's four, really. There's not much I know, but I know that they've got four.
Okay, I, I think, let's, let's stay based in, it sounds as if we don't know the answer to some of these questions. Correct.
We can either do it out of dues and memberships, easily.
I think, yeah.
So.
Or the contingency, the one.
No, how about dues and memberships, take it down 3,900? Does that, does that meet with acceptance by everyone?
Yeah, I'd rather leave a, a nice round figure in contingency. Which is what, 150?
It's currently at like 155, 56.
We got 50,000 to go.
Could I make a small, not, just a.
Okay, guys, everybody settle down, Mr. Reitinger. One at a time, please.
It wasn't clear to me, on the 5% EPED reduction, you know, I was not trying to ever say that that should be a flat, everybody loses 5%. It was the total spend needs to be reduced 5%. But I think I'd leave it to administrative discretion about what to do. Like, you know, it might be that, you know, they don't need assert anymore, or, you know, you can deal with one coach instead of two. I just, I, I'm uncomfortable in saying we're making statutory, if you will, all the EPED assignments, and they're locked in stone, and all of those get 5% off the top. I, I prefer to give a little discretion, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to follow my sword over that by any means.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I, I don't think we have to, we have, I don't think we have to say it, so I would leave it to the discretion of the administration. All right, should we go through one more time to make sure we're comfortable with this? Kind of joking. Shall we, Mr. Kimball, do you want to finalize this and then circulate it to the board?
Absolutely.
Does anybody, in all seriousness, would anybody like to, to talk about anything else? I'm happy to, to do that. I, I think, there's a little bit of decision fatigue that has set in here. Yes, Dr. Jones?
I just want to confirm, it seemed to be that the board, and I think all of you, were able to make a 7:00 AM Friday morning meeting? Is there anybody that, that, and Margaret was the one I was worried about, and she said she could do 7:00 AM, just because I know she gets to school early. So, 7:00 AM to actually get the budget, get these numbers approved. I will provide that for you. So 7:00 AM Friday would be to approve the budget. The only last question that I have, and I think, you know, because we're trying to do this really quickly, probably Hunter will do a print out of Munis to present for Friday, but I do want to ask the school board to give it some thought on what you want the budget document to look like, because over the last five years, we have changed almost every year based on community input and what they have wanted to see. And what we used to do in 2011, 2012, our community said they could not understand that budget, it had a bunch of codes and numbers in it, and you had to know where people's salaries were coded, as part in this department and part in this department, and what we heard from the community was they couldn't figure it out, that, you know, we were trying to be tricky about it. So then we came back and added the people-friendly version, actually, last year, which was new, and that was supposed to have the narrative, it looked more like Arlington's budget, more like the city budget. Some of our staff actually said for the first time they could actually see some numbers, it had, you know, the departments all rolled in, where you could see how much we spent on special education. And then we put the line item budget behind that, and that's what we did last year. But what we're hearing this year is that certain people in our community don't like that format. So I just think it would be great for us, and you don't have to tell us today, because we're not going to have the final format by Friday, we'll have the Munis budget, but please give it some thought, and if you have time, go look at 11 and 12, look at 13, 14, look at last year's budget, and, and let's come to consensus as a school board on what you want us to produce, because we, we don't have, you know, a budget department that actually does all this, it's just pretty much Hunter and John Brett that put that together for us. But we do need some guidance on what this school board wants to see.
So just giving my, I, I don't want to speak for the, the community, but the input I saw was less about what the final budget looks like, and the need to go back to the showing of the actuals on the line item budget during the negotiation. of the actuals on the line item budget during the negotiation process. And so, I don't know, I don't know that the inclusion of the past year's actuals is as important to me in the actual published budget. If it's statutorily required, that's fine, but I really, that, that's very important to see in deciding what next year's budget looks like. The other thing I just wanted to note is, I, I know, I may not, the will of the board may not be this way, but I would, I remain of the view that, well, I can't tell you what it should be, that I would like to see the salaries and benefits, the overall human cost, what we think it's going to be, and any excess not taken out, since we've gotten where we are right now, but put in the contingency so it can be appropriately managed as opposed to unmanaged. But that's just my, the way I would think it'd be better to handle things.
Is that feasible in, in the timeframe?
Yeah, in the fact, but I think, I think it'll take more discussion. Obviously, you know, something's going on there. You know, the, the issue in my mind that I'm playing around is, okay, if, if you, you know, you know, budget for these people, and they have these benefits, and they have, you know, retirement, FICA, health insurance, blah, 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 and you plug in the rates and the benefits, and you come out with this number, and that during the course of the year, whether there's vacancy, whether there's leave without pay, you know, workers' comp, something like that, whose salary do you reduce? Whose benefits do you, you know, do you reduce? Or then you, or then do you, you know, calculate based on that, and then go back to the law of averages? And like I said, you know, salaries I'm not, I'm really not comfortable with. The benefits probably a little more, and that would probably be the first area I would delve into, but it would take, it would take a little more analysis in trying to figure out, you know, what's happened, what's going on, and the best way, way to address that. I'd be happy to work with this, to Reitinger on that or others.
And what timeframe do you think that would take? I mean, I, I think fundamentally it would be in our interest to move that to the contingency, because I think we're going to need the contingency in a big way this year, so...
In reality, I mean, the timeframe could be, it could be included as part of this budget cycle, because the thing is, you're not reducing the money, you're just changing the place where it is being budgeted. The caveat on that is, okay, understand that, that part of your contingency now will include funds that were formally budgeted in, for benefits, and we really won't know whether those are available until probably October, November initially, and then we go back mid-year after other places, like the federal government have their open enrollments. And also, we have some experience in terms of, you know, what positions we were able to fill, whether people were out on leave without pay, whether there was workers' comp. But, but, you know, that being said, as Tony said, or, we know, we've discussed, you know, sometimes with the contingency, just my personal observation, you know, the first couple of crises that hit us, and they usually hit us in the summer, you know, the first crisis that happens, you know, goes to the contingency. You go to the contingency, and then you have, you know, an issue later on in the year, and your contingency's gone. So, you're not able to really prioritize among your crises. So, it may require more thought about when the board is asked to transfer funds from the contingency, and what's remaining, and how much of the year is remaining, if that makes any sense.
This, this, this reminds me, and I think I know just enough to be dangerous, but I'm thinking more along the lines of restricted versus unrestricted funds. We're essentially trying to put what tech, in a sense, is restricted because it's been budgeted for in unrestricted, in a contingency, that where we could end up, or vice versa.
It would be the opposite.
Opposite. And then find ourselves in trouble, or find that we've used funds that really we had other, we planned other uses for. Which is why for me, I'm not as comfortable putting it in contingency, because contingency, if it's there, if anything happens, you can say, well, I'm taking it. But if the, the benefits that you anticipated may not have been used, come in, or somebody is suddenly demanded, there's no, there's no money to cover it. That's my issue with that. That's why I start, so I would hunt on that.
Well, and the other thing I will, will say here, if this makes any sense, this is, in some regards, a one-trick pony, because it will change how we budget for benefits. If we do this, how we budget for benefits in the future, and I will have to be doing this every year, because otherwise, your, your base will be, you know, artificially reduced going, and your ask will be, will be higher, so...
Don't get this more than once.
Correct.
We're not getting anything.
Well...
Yeah.
Correct.
But we won't be getting what we're not getting more than once. He'll yell at you if you don't turn it on.
I just want you to know if we're going to talk about anything substantial, because I'm really beat. I need to go. I mean, is there anything else going? Can I leave? I mean, seriously, I'll stay. I'll hang in there if you need me. And I'm, I'm not directing at you, Hunter. I just have to be looking your way. I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
Yeah, can I just, can I just say one thing? I mean...
Do I have to stay for this?
I got this right. Well, I think you'll, this'll take 10 seconds. So, we kept 80% of the teacher increase. We kept three elementary teachers. We kept the...
No, two.
Two. Two elementary teachers. We kept the NYPD coordinator, the part-time gifted, the extra para day, half a para, and the Mount Daniel principal, assistant principal, right? I don't feel as bad as I did last week.
Thanks for turning that out.
I mean, yeah, because this has been a really horrible process, and I think we need to focus on the fact that, in the end, we saved a lot of things that needed to be saved. We couldn't save everything, but, I mean, I didn't want to leave here feeling as bad as I already felt, so I made the list for myself, and I'm just saying it out loud.
Well, thanks for sharing. We might have to sit.
All right, so we will convene at 7 o'clock on Friday morning.
Central office.
Central office.
I can only stay for about 30 to 45 minutes.
I hope that's too much time. Thank you.
Sign, seal, deliver.
All right, thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.